The Boulder City Council. I am Councilmember Shuhard, and I thank you for joining us. We have only two items on tonight's agenda. First, we will hear information on the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Preliminary Analysis and Tradeoffs. And our second item is the Healthy Buildings: Stronger Community Roadmap Discussion. Before we get into our work items, I would like to outline how the meeting will be conducted. We will review the SAS presentation, and then we'll have time for questions. At the end of the presentation, we will conduct our council discussion with staff. If you have questions, please wait for staff to complete their presentation. We will now turn to, we were going to turn to Nuria, but I think we might have a substitute. Who's our substitute?
Yep.
Is that Chris? Okay.
Here, Ryan.
Okay, we will turn to Chris Meschek to introduce our first item. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Ryan. Good evening, council members. I'm stepping in for Nuria here, and we're excited for the two study session topics that we have for you tonight. The first item here on the Comprehensive Plan, as the team will outline, is they're starting to move into the analysis section and some of the ideas that are coming forward. So with that, I'll turn it to Brad Mueller, our Director of Planning and Development Services, to kick it off.
Thanks so much, Chris, and good evening, council members. I am Brad Mueller, Director of Planning and Development Services. I'm lucky to support that group. And I will say that while council gets to think about many big things on a regular basis, it is especially exciting to be able to step back and look at the city comprehensively. And that, of course, is what the comprehensive plan does, is look at all facets. And it's also exciting to be able to take a break and step back and look at 20 years into the future and think about the big items for a vision for the future in conjunction with colleagues at the county and, of course, all of the community members this way as well. We are about halfway through an 18-month process. So we are seeing great progress. We'll report to you the thousands of different points of input that we've gotten so far. And while we are halfway through, we still do have plenty of time for input from community members, from stakeholders, from visitors, and from yourselves as well as the other deciding bodies, the planning board and the planning commission and county commissioners at the county. This represents kind of a funneling down, so we're kind of midway in that funneling, and you're going to hear about some of those ideas that we'd love to hear your feedback on. I will say too that we very much appreciate the vision that you helped articulate when this process kicked off a year or so ago and really challenged us to think bold. So with that, we're going to give you one of several bold ideas and look forward to continuing through this process. With that, we've got a whole team here. They'll introduce themselves as we go along, but right now you're going to hear first from Christopher Johnson, our Senior Manager of Comprehensive Planning.
Great. Thank you, Brad, and good evening, Council Board, or sorry, council members. Christopher Johnson, as Brad mentioned, I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager. This evening, go ahead and flip to the next slide, Tess, if you would. This evening, we are going to give you all a brief presentation, about 20 minutes or so. We've allocated about 20 minutes for some clarifying questions and then really hope to engage in discussion for close to an hour. The evening's agenda item will actually focus more on the conceptual future land use framework as opposed to what was described in the title of the agenda. We had a little bit of a snafu with our new, our new one-meeting system, so we're still working through the kinks, but we're going to get better at that as we move forward. And then I also just wanted to mention that Kathleen King unfortunately came down with an illness over the last 24 hours or so. So she will not be giving her portion of the presentation, but Sarah Horn will be jumping in for her next slide. So since our last meeting with you in May, the team has really been busy at work responding to your feedback and moving forward with the project. We have updated and documented our shared vision statement, which is in your memo. We've continued to engage with the community in a variety of different ways on the areas of focus that were identified earlier in the project and have a number of things actually upcoming in the next couple of weeks. And then we are continuing to explore several ideas that were raised during that May meeting, most notably, and as we will discuss this evening, our potential revisions to the land use map. Next slide. And it's, as Brad mentioned, we are about halfway through. It's actually been almost a full year since we kicked off the project last October, which is amazing for all of us. It's gone very quickly. And so far, we have received about 5,000 individual community responses through all those different engagement opportunities. They have included, of course, in-person workshops, online questionnaires, our interactive theater events, and many more. So we will continue to engage with the community over the next nine months or so as we move towards the adoption process next summer and hoping that we are making progress towards our goal of this being the most inclusive Comprehensive Plan update to date. Next slide. So just as a quick reminder, we are in the third step of this process. We are calling this a Boulder Direction. And really, this is the heart of the project where we are considering and evaluating the various policy choices and ultimately will make decisions on what that recommended direction is. This step will last through the end of year and quite honestly, will likely sneak over into early 2026 before we move into that documentation and adoption of the plan later in the spring and summer of next year. Next slide. So the goal for the evening is really a bit of a work session. We are bringing you in pretty early into this process and really hope that you feel like you have an opportunity to co-create with us a bit. We will be exploring this conceptual land use framework, but also recognize that it can inform potential policies decisions down the road and vice versa. They really are interconnected, especially when those policies affect the way that we use the land within the city or the surrounding areas of the county. I do also want to just confirm with all the members of council and anybody that's listening this evening that this, what you will be presented with tonight is all very, very much work in progress. So there are no final decisions that have been made. We're not asking for any final approval tonight. And I can say with, I think, 99.9% confidence that some of the names or of the different designations or the language that we use to describe them will continue to evolve over the next few months. But we are very confident in the overall concept and we're excited to share it with you this evening. Next slide. I also wanted to just reinforce and provide a comparison between land use descriptions and zoning because they are very easily and often confused. So future land use really is aspirational and describes the vision for an area over a 20-year time horizon within the Comprehensive Plan. It may or may not be the same as what is on the ground today as it is forward-looking, and it informs our future zoning and development decisions. Whereas on the other hand, zoning is a legal property right and establishes specific dimensional and use-related standards that must be followed. It really definitively regulates the allowed uses, the building form and the intensity of development on an individual property. Next slide. So as a final thought, I also wanted to share this diagram again to draw attention to what we see as really the three levels of planning that we use here in Boulder. The Comprehensive Plan, you know, flies at that highest level and really should provide broad guidance on the vision and the values of the community. Our sub-community and area plans take that one step further and can provide additional detail on the appropriate character of uses, the building scale, and other factors for a particular geography or location within the city. And then finally, zoning and our Boulder Revised Code really regulate what uses and dimensional requirements then are applied to a specific property. What I can say is that the land use map in the Comprehensive Plan currently has tended to combine really the first two levels and even in some cases has bordered on the third level in terms of its level of detail. So we hope that the framework that we're going to present tonight will help reestablish a more appropriate level of detail for the Comprehensive Plan and really this interaction and relationship between these three tools. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Tess Shorn for the next section.
Hello, members of City Council. My name is Tess Shorn, and today I will be giving you a background of land use in the Boulder Valley, presenting some challenges we face, goals we have, and case study research that has helped inform our new approach. We want to start with a reminder about what the intention of the Comprehensive Planned Land Use Map is. It is meant to describe a desired future for the community. It guides future rezoning decisions. It also guides initial zoning for any land annexed into the city, and it is used as a reference for any development projects that go through the site review process. These projects must be consistent with the land use map and with the policies in the Comprehensive Plan. As part of our work to rethink the current version of the land use map, we looked back at previous iterations, beginning with this map from 1970. This map describes the vision of what Boulder would look like in 1990 and offers a set of 11 designations, many fewer than our land use map today. Another note about this map is that in the 1970s, separating uses across a city was common nationally, particularly for things like separating business and residential uses. Despite this, we do see a mix of high and medium density residential within business uses in the downtown area and along major corridors in this plan. Now here is the current land use map. Firstly, you can see that the reach of the Comprehensive Planning area has extended significantly as the city and county continue to work together to manage open spaces and neighborhoods surrounding the city in unincorporated Boulder County. You'll also notice a lot more colors on the map. Over time, the list of simple designations has evolved, and we now manage 26 different designations. This map is also much more detailed. There are instances of multiple land uses within a single block. For example, there are eight at Alpine Balsam. And in other places in the city, there are even multiple designations within a single parcel. The land use map looks more and more like a zoning map, and that makes it really complicated. As we work with community members, policymakers, and other city staff, particularly our colleagues who work on development review cases, we've identified a number of challenges with the current approach to the land use map and its designations. The map has lost its purpose as describing a vision for the future, leading to confusion about whether the map represents existing conditions or desired future conditions. The fine-grained application of different designations within a place creates confusion about the future of the neighborhood and limits desirable outcomes. The land use definitions, which are within Chapter 10 of the Comprehensive Plan, overlap and they are structurally inconsistent with each other. The definitions are also pretty dated. For instance, the density limits on residential land use categories have not been updated since 1977. So we've identified some goals for the approach to the land use map as we work through potential revisions. First, we want to reset expectations that the map describes the future of the Boulder Valley. Community members, including council, has described a desire to build greater resiliency in the designations that would allow for a range of desirable outcomes as conditions change over time in response to environmental, economic, societal, and other factors. We are striving to create an approach that delivers equitable opportunities for property owners and outcomes for community members. We are also reexamining how the plan can integrate important climate strategies and strengthen relationships between land use and mobility planning. To help inform this work, we've looked at a number of case studies from across the country. I'm going to share a few to help inform your conversation tonight. The first is Ann Arbor, Michigan. This is a peer city we often look to for comparison. And this is a draft of Ann Arbor's land use map as they are currently undergoing a Comprehensive Plan update. You'll notice they've really stripped back the designations to only seven categories. This approach recognizes that today, communities are finding that mixing multiple uses within neighborhoods helps create and maintain community vibrancy, and the need for separating individual uses is no longer desired within a community. Along with describing the intent of each district type on the map, the draft definitions for these designations includes descriptions of primary and secondary uses and building types and offers helpful illustrations on how some of the supported building types in that designation are to look. Springfield, Missouri shows a great example of applying a place-type approach where each designation can accommodate varying levels of different uses. This is an example we're looking at to better tie our land use expectations to the city's use table. There are a couple more case studies noted in your memo, but the last one we're going to look at together is from Plano, Texas. This plan creates useful classes for its future land use categories such as neighborhoods and networks to help better define the future intended structure of the city. As you can see, these classes mapped across the city of Plano create a clear, easy-to-understand future direction for the city. And now I will pass it to my colleague Sarah Horn to talk to you all about our new proposed options for land use categories.
Sarah, I think you're muted.
Yes, of course. Okay, here I am. Hi, guys. Thanks, Tess. That was great. Hi, council members. I'm Sarah Horn, Senior City Planner, and our team is really excited to work with you tonight to think through this proposed approach for designating and mapping land uses in the Boulder Valley. Just a reminder, this is all draft material, and we want to work with you this evening to confirm this concept is headed in the right direction. I'm going to go over the details of this new option and discuss some test cases, and then we'll have time for clarifying questions before council discusses the two key questions in front of you tonight. So first, why are we doing this? Well, I'll quickly share a story from my colleague Kathleen King, who KJ mentioned is under the weather tonight. If she wasn't, she'd be here to share it herself. But when she started with the city, there was a saying on the comp planning team, "None of this happened by accident. Don't screw it up." That's burned into her brain and has since transferred to the rest of our team. We broached the idea of changing how we planned land use across the city very carefully and with great intention. But after almost 50 years of planning land use with mostly single-use designations and managing the land use plan on a really fine-grained scale, as Tess touched on, there are a few significant considerations that inform this path to rethink our land use system. The first is that the changing climate calls for a land use plan that can adapt and offer a path to resilience. The second thing that we're really building into the land use strategy is a recognition that the population is changing. Community members over the age of 60 will continue to outnumber people under 18 for the next 20 years. Additionally, we know that land use and policy choices of the past have impacted who could live and thrive in Boulder. So working to make land use choices that offer a more equitable future is an important component of our approach. And finally, local industries and the traditional workplace, as we've all seen, have changed dramatically in the last five years. Our current land use structure doesn't support the live-work lifestyle that will continue to be common across the community. So a lot of change has already happened, and we felt the challenges of working within the confines of our current land use structure to respond to that change. What we're looking at tonight is a concept that could help us meet the future with resilience. Okay, here we go. From the case studies that Tess reviewed and shared with you earlier and informed by the input we've collected from the community so far, we've put together a framework we think will offer a good approach to planning Boulder's land use moving forward. First, we're scaling back the parcel-by-parcel approach to defining land use and creating designations that can apply at a neighborhood scale. Second, we're working towards unique definitions that attempt to remove a lot of the ambiguity between the current designations and allow for a different mix of uses. These designations would also offer a more adaptable environment for zoning choices if conditions change and give a wider variety of redevelopment options for property owners. And the link between land use and zoning would be more effective. We're considering a more aspirational description in the land use designations to avoid unnecessary confusion and conflicts with the zoning code. So here's the draft structure. The designations, for land use designations, it has four classes. The first is neighborhoods, the second is hubs, then networks and institutions. And within each of these classes, there are unique designations that can be applied at a neighborhood scale to help guide redevelopment within the city moving forward. So now I'll walk you through each. First, we're going to look at neighborhoods. Neighborhood 1 is a designation that offers a couple of different housing types, such as single-family units, ADUs, multiplex units, and cottage courts. And it includes some small-scale commercial opportunities. This is the neighborhood designation that would also apply to our manufactured housing communities. Land with a neighborhood 2 designation that you see in the middle of the slide is probably still a primarily residential neighborhood, but would allow for more multi-unit housing and more shared spaces. Neighborhood 3 on the right side would likely apply mostly to established rural neighborhoods in unincorporated Boulder County. You'll notice the names of these designations are agnostic of adjectives that describe density or housing type, which is intentional. Within these neighborhood designations, there are some policy implications, and it would be helpful for us to hear council's thoughts on these during your discussion later. In both neighborhood 1 and 2, there are allowances for a wider variety of housing types in more neighborhoods than is currently allowed by our land use designations and map. They also describe allowing for small-scale commercial opportunities. The draft definitions offer paths to help address housing challenges, create more walkable neighborhoods, and address our community's interests in a more inclusive economy. I'll now move to the second class, hubs. The current comp plan includes a diagram describing different kinds of centers, which you see in the map on the slide. The hub concept advances that idea and actually creates land use designations that would solidify how these places can evolve moving forward. There are three hub types. Local hubs are smaller in scale and are intended to provide local neighborhood uses. The Lucky's Market area is an example of the scale and offerings of what a local hub could look like. A community hub is larger in scale and might include a broader mix of commercial and some residential uses. It would have a larger reach than the local hubs related to who might want to access these spots regularly. And finally, on the right side of the screen, a regional hub. This would really be a regional destination drawing from communities beyond Boulder. So today, those might be places like downtown, the university, and the 29th Street Mall area. There's also a hub type we're considering that comes out of conversations about the evolution of East Boulder. This is an innovation and production hub. These are meant to be neighborhoods with a mix of light industrial, office, and residential uses and be those live-work neighborhoods that we talked about wanting to see happen during the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan process. And then our next class is networks. What are networks, you ask? Well, we start with Parks and Greenways. This designation is somewhat self-explanatory, but would apply to our parks, system, and greenways network to identify places for active and passive recreation. The open space designation would collapse previous open space designations into a single category identifying land for open space purposes, which are defined in the city charter. And finally, the rural lands network is made up of a lot of land in unincorporated Boulder County that's outside the open space network, but is important to maintain as land for agriculture and other uses like public utilities. Okay, we're at the final class, which is institutions. Civic institutions define areas for government or cultural facilities and healthcare campuses. A new university designation would identify land that will be used for university purposes into the future. This would include student and faculty housing, along with the academic campus and research facilities. We found that a number of university towns have created a designation specifically for state university land, and we think this makes sense for Boulder as well. The final category, which you see on the right side of the screen, is industrial. This would be applied to land that the community wants to preserve for light industrial, manufacturing, and service uses into the future. Okay, that's all the designations. There are 13 total, which is half of the current 26. So just take a moment to think about that. And now, while you're thinking about that, we'll move on to testing. As our team worked through this concept, we did a couple tests of areas around the city to see if applying these classes and designations actually works. I'm going to share these with you now, and we'd love to hear your reactions or feedback during the conversation later. The first test is East Boulder. Many of you have ridden alongside our team as we worked on this area of town for the past six years. But for those unfamiliar, this is a recently planned subcommunity. As you can see on the slide, it's located east of Foothills and north of Arapahoe. Through the East Boulder Subcommunity Planning Process, we worked really hard with the community to define how this area should evolve into the future. So we thought it'd be good to test our new concept framework here to make sure that under the new designations, we would still to make sure that under the new designations, we would still be able to deliver the vision and realize all of that work and time that the community put into thinking about the future of the area. So under the draft structure, the land around Fifty-Fifth and Arapahoe, previously a mixed-use TOD designation, would be redefined as a community hub. The orangey-red you see in the middle of the diagram on the screen, allowing for that important mix of residential and commercial that supports transit-oriented development. The brown areas on the diagram, areas previously designated mixed-use and industrial, are now designated, would be designated as innovation and production hubs, recognizing light industrial uses and allowing for residential. Other areas of the sub-community where community members wanted to preserve space for industrial uses, the areas you see in gray are designated industrial. And the hospital and future eastern city campus have a civic destination, the blue on the diagram. This test illustrates that the new framework does offer a vision for the future that can still be consistent with the sub-community plan. The next test example is more about creating designations that meet community expectations for certain areas of town. This diagram shows the intersection of Quince and Broadway, where Lucky's Market's located. Right now, this area is designated low-density residential, meaning that if this activity center were to redevelop, the developer would have to jump through some hoops to replace it with something similar to this important neighborhood asset. Under the proposed land use framework, this area would be redefined as a local hub, offering a better match for community expectations in the future. And then our final test case is an example of a recent ongoing development project. What you see on this slide is the land use map for the Alpine-Balsam area at Broadway and Balsam. There are currently ten land use designations in this area. For those of you who have followed along in this process, and for those who haven't, aligning the land use map and zoning created a lot of hurdles that had to be overcome to deliver this project. Under the proposed structure, this area would qualify as a community hub. The reddish-orange on the slide, surrounded by neighborhood two in orange and neighborhood one in yellow, offering a more efficient, faster, and direct path through the site review process. And there you have it, our proposal for revisions to the city's future land use designations. And before I go into next steps, I just want to give a huge shout out to the comp planning team and all of our department colleagues and subject matter experts who've been working really hard over the last few months to develop this. We're really excited about it and really excited to get your reactions to it. And before we do that, I'll quickly share what our next steps are. We'll be hosting a hands-on workshop on September ninth at Casey Middle School, where community members will have the opportunity to explore different options using these proposed land use concepts. The statistically valid survey will be distributed on September fifteenth, and we'll launch an online open participation companion survey on September twenty-second. We have a boards roadshow scheduled for the month of September. We'll be going to eight boards to share information on the comp plan process and get their feedback on some of these initial concepts. In November, we'll share with you the results of the surveys, board feedback, and engagement outcomes in an IP memo. And then we'll be back in front of you on December eleventh for a joint meeting with Planning Board to share staff recommendations on major land use policy changes to consider for the update. And now I'll read tonight's questions for discussion. Does City Council support the preliminary concept for revisions to the comprehensive plan future land use designations? And what community feedback do you need to inform future decisions about substantial changes to policy and future land use? And with that, I'll turn it, I think, over to you, Councilmember Shushard.
Thank you, Sarah and team. Wonderful presentations. So, looking at my moderator clock, we have until about six forty-one for the rest of this. I heard a proposal to leave twenty minutes for questions. Maybe we could shoot for maybe ten to fifteen, given where we are now. So why don't we start with questions from council members? And then we can go to comments, and for the comments, address both of these together, if that works for folks. Okay, and if I can just look at my right screen here, I think I said Tara first. And then I'm gonna have to figure out my navigation here, but Tara, is that right? Tara, you first?
Sure, I can be first.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, so my question is about the hubs. So you said that the local hub was Lucky's, and then I saw community hubs. Can you give, you gave an example of Alpine-Balsam as the community hub. Can you explain why that's a community hub? Is it just the shopping center is bigger, or? I don't know. What makes something a community hub versus a local hub?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Tara. I'll pop in here for just a, for a second, and Tess, when you have a minute, you can take the PowerPoint down and we drop the questions into the chat. Thank you. So, first of all, I would say this is first pass, right? And so, you know, our initial thinking around Alpine-Balsam really as a pretty high level of activity compared, you know, compared to Lucky's Market. The scale of Lucky's Market is quite a bit smaller than the commercial area at Alpine-Balsam. Also thinking about the future, civic facilities that will be there, the density of housing that surrounds that area. That was, that was what led us to believe that, you know, the application of a community hub might be most appropriate. We did have some conversation with Planning Board on Tuesday, and this similar question came up. And, you know, one of the things that they provided us some advice for us to consider was really the scale of the, of the commercial experience or what would be offered there. So something like Table Mesa that has a much larger grocery facility might be more appropriate as a commercial, a commercial hub, and Alpine-Balsam would be something at that local scale.
Mini-community hub or a commercial hub?
Uh, community hub, sorry.
Okay, that makes sense. That's my only question.
Thank you, Tara. I think we have Nicole, Matt, and then Mark.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I just had a few questions. One is thinking about the hubs and specifically the local hubs. Is that something that we would envision having in every neighborhood? Or is it just sort of in the places that exist now? What's the, what's sort of the vision for that? Are we looking at taco trucks on every corner kind of thing? Is it, what's the, what are we looking for there?
Thank you, Councilmember Spear. I think both existing and then also potentially future places identified by community through our community work on September ninth and ongoing will potentially identify new local hubs that they would like to see.
Okay, and what, I mean, because within, you know, some neighborhoods, right, there's not really a whole lot of services within, say, a mile or so. And so, is that, is it something where in the future, a neighborhood could look, could have a local hub even if it's not identified, you know, in the next, in the next few weeks?
Yes, and I think it's, you know, getting at this fifteen-minute neighborhood concept, as we'll hear from our community assembly and ongoing, but yes, it could be identified at some point in the future and go through a land use map change.
Okay, and then another, it seems like this will decrease the time for permitting and the obstacles that people need to kind of walk through. Is that correct? And so it should take some time and potentially money off of the cost of developing? Is that a fair statement?
I think, I think it's a fair statement that it would potentially remove some of the additional steps of a process. I, you know, I can't speak necessarily to the cost of it, but just in terms of time savings, the, you know, one of the goals is to create these more broad designations that can allow for multiple different outcomes to occur within them, as, as we kind of reflected. And certainly, there are many other examples I think we could point to where the specificity and the granularity of the map today really limits, you know, what, what can happen on a specific property. And so you're, you're basically stuck with, you know, one land use and one, one zone district associated with that. And there's a process to change that, of course. But it, but it does involve time, time and effort. And so what we're hoping to do through this is to allow for a number of different things to happen under a single land use category. So that, at least that land use review is something that would already be captured within the policies and the map of the comp plan, and then go through that, you know, any rezonings that may be necessary as part of a site review process.
Well, thank you. And then last question. What, what are the, the unique roles of the statistically valid survey and the, I forget, the, the online companion survey? How will, how will they be used?
Yeah, great, great question. So, a couple different things. You know, we've, up to date, we have not had a statistically valid survey for this comprehensive plan process. So that is something we do want to introduce to receive some more scientifically valid input through that process. At least that's our hope. We also want to make sure that we expand the opportunities for people that may not live in the city of Boulder to also participate in this process. So that's also why we've created this online companion version, which will essentially be the same questions, but it would be available to visitors or commuters, people that work here but may not live here to receive the invitation for the statistically valid survey. So, you know, we, we fully recognize that they are two different, two different methodologies, and certainly the results we receive from both. One will be more quantitative and scientific, the other will be more qualitative and anecdotal. And so we will, you know, make sure to recognize that and use them appropriately, and of course, share all that information with you as well.
Yep, okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, Matt, then Mark and Lauren.
Thanks, Ryan. Just real quick, I want to follow up on one of Nicole's questions, because one thing I'm curious about is, do you, you sort of mentioned, well, the question was really about, will this reduce, obviously, planning, you know, some of the discretionary planning and permitting time perhaps? And I'm specifically curious about, like, land use changes? Because I'm kind of seeing, that's something we see a fair amount, kind of given we're at the sort of exhausted state of this comp plan. And so I'm wondering, do you envision there being just less of those because of the nature of the flexibility in general? So I'm just wondering, that specific piece, is that going to kind of be really largely alleviate or eliminated going forward?
Yes, I think overall, that, that is a goal of ours through this process is to make, make the, the future land use map, you know, reflective of that twenty-year vision, and, and hopefully that, you know, can withstand that, our, our five- and ten-year major update, you know, sequence. We, we of course recognize that conditions change and, and things happen, and so we may need to revisit that and update the land uses as we go forward and through a separate process. But the goal is to, you know, for the land use map to really live for that five- and ten-year time horizon. The other thing I'll just quickly mention is, is that, you know, today, in order to change the land use map, you either have to enter through, you know, through a rezoning and a site review process, or you have to wait for one of the midterm or major updates, and you kind of have to be in the know, you know, in order to submit your request. It goes, you know, it gets evaluated by staff and goes into the comp plan process. You know, we really, we really would hope to amend some of the procedures related to land use map changes as well going forward so that they are, they're more open, at least, or at least there's more of an opportunity to potentially review and change those without, without so much being on the table, you know, the high stakes of a five- and ten-year update of submitting those. So that's another thing that we're, we're looking at and considering.
Perfect. And Ryan, you want comments later? Is that correct?
Yeah, just questions now, please.
Yeah, so my other question is, and I'm gonna pardon, because you're facilitating, follow up on Ryan's inquiry in Hotline. You know, following HB twenty-four thirteen thirteen on the transit-oriented communities, now that that's kind of state law, and I'm wondering, why was their decision to not have a sort of transit-focused district that really kind of goes along our arterials and how to sort of paint that picture in consistency with state law? So I'm just sort of curious why we didn't do that, and then, but more importantly, how do we then capture that intent in our comprehensive planning, knowing that that state law sort of remains sort of prominent?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, and one of the, you know, one of the unique elements of the hub concept is that it can also apply to corridors. And so I think there is an opportunity for us as we move through the process and actually begin to paint the map, so to speak. We can consider, and again, this may involve some naming changes and other things, so that's clear, but understand, you know, the nodes that are important from a local and community, you know, and regional perspective as far as activity centers, but also how those extend along some of our transit corridors as well.
Appreciate it. That's all for me.
Okay, Mark, then Lauren and Aaron.
I only have two quick questions. First, refresh my recollection, because I may have been losing my mind on this. Did the, the staff memo make reference to valuing urban canopy for neighborhoods? Or is that a, have I lost the thread of the document?
I don't know if we specifically mentioned that, but certainly that is something we do value and certainly would incorporate into the description of each of these designations so that, you know, it's, it's reflective, that that's an expectation that we have going forward.
Okay, then my corollary question is, why are we not doing the same thing with respect to neighborhoods' capacity for wildfire resilience? I think that's going to be as, as much of an issue as anything else going forward.
Well, one thing I can, I can say that we are working on currently is doing some additional, more detailed land use analysis of, of, of our current designations, but also starting to tinker around with these designations. And one of the policy, really policy threshold choices or something that we're testing out is, you know, if we were to limit or restrict future development within some of those woo-y areas, what does that mean in terms of our capacity? Where does, where, where are the lower-risk areas of the city where we could relocate those types of uses, that kind of thing? So we'll have more information to, to share on that as far as the outcomes of that testing here in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add that I do think Councilmember Wallach, in the neighborhood types, there was a bit of description about the urban tree canopy. And also, just with wildfire, there's a lot of policies and regulations that, like, cover that, and so not all of it will end up on the land use map. There'll be considerations, but there'll be other spots where some of that lives.
I'm gratified to know that I have not lost my mind and that there was some reference in the document to urban canopy. My only other question is, can you describe in sort of layman's terms, how is neighborhood one different from today's single-family zones? I'm, I'm just not getting a clear picture of that.
Tess, do you want to take that one?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Wallach. So neighborhood one would expand from the kind of very low and low-density designations to being, to allowing a lot more flexibility within how many units would be allowed. So all the plexes would potentially be allowed. That's a policy aspect we're exploring. Planning Board also proposed not limiting it by units, but by kind of building bulk to be consistent with a neighborhood one, which is, you know, classically, single-family, but allow, we're working to allow a little bit more of that missing middle housing into that neighborhood one designation.
Okay, I, I did not get that in the description, and it would be very useful to be a little clearer so that I know what we are doing with neighborhood one. Because it becomes, as you describe it, it's a bit more problematic to me, and I'd like to fully understand what it is we're contemplating.
Thanks, Mark. Do you have any more questions?
Nope, I'm just a request for information.
Okay, Lauren then Aaron.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this update. I'm really excited about it. My questions, I think, are mostly, I appreciate this streamlining and kind of how far can we go? So, you talked a little bit about this being around use instead of intensity, and because of that, I guess I'm wondering, why are we doing things like separating residential into neighborhood one and neighborhood two? Because those seem predominantly about intensity to me and not about use.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember. I think we are, you know, we recognize that there are different characteristics, even within a similar use pattern. So if we think about residential, you know, we, we can look at areas that have a characteristic of something that is smaller, relatively smaller in scale, you know, up to maybe four units per, per building, something like that, maybe some small commercial activity that happens on a corner or something like that. But then reflecting upon the character of that area versus something that tends to be a, you know, a townhome complex or four- and five-story residential buildings with mixed use on the ground floor, that, that begins to feel a bit different in terms of just the overall characteristics, the, the feeling that you would have as a community member going through that space, et cetera. So part of the, part of the effort, you know, is to, is to define or at least designate where, where some higher-intensity areas would be appropriate, especially near those local and community hubs. We want to make sure that we are allowing for and giving the, the vision and the guidance for those to be a bit more active and a bit more intense to support those kinds of areas. So that's, that's partly why we've included those two different neighborhood designations. To support those kinds of areas. So that's, that's partly why we've included those two different, um, neighborhood designations.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, I want to point out a quick thing, just because you touched on it being like four unit kind of houses. And I will say that one of the sample images you have in there is of, um, the building next to me. Just the same as my building, which is an eight unit thing. So, and I noticed that in the last comprehensive plan update that, at least in the initial stages, the images actually didn't match the character of what was described. In small scale, okay. I'm also curious about, um, kind of these local hub, um, community hub. We have three different options of that and you talk in neighborhood one about some level of commercial being allowed. But then we also have separated out a local hub. And to me, I've always kind of thought of that local hub as being, a lot of cities do this. Like Portland, where you have like a connector and a connector street and that corner allows like a bodega, which is a much smaller intervention than like a Lucky's Market, which is a whole block. Um, and so do you, I guess, to me, it feels like there's, do, do you anticipate kind of identifying those connector connector areas? Um, that might be a smaller scale than what it looks like local hub is currently talking about, or how do you see that fitting in?
Yeah, that's another great question. We, I will admit, we are still wrestling with that a little bit. Again, kind of, um, attempting to be as, um, broad brush as we can. But also recognizing that there can be some value in i- identifying particular locations for certain types of things. And so there is some prescriptiveness there associated with that. Um, you know, the way that we've at least envisioned sort of the commercial activity in a neighborhood one or two versus a local hub is, is really, I think, more of what you have described in terms of, um, a particular, uh, intersection or corner where there might be a, you know, a cafe on one corner and a nail salon on the, on the next one. And, and, you know, uh, it's really kind of small scale commercial interventions. Um, also looking at home based businesses and other kinds of commercial activities within, you know, within those, um, broadly residential areas. The local hub is, is intended to be something that's maybe just a notch above that. Um, where you do begin to think about more of about a block scale of something of, of that kind of level of activity. So we haven't taken the step yet to identify any of those, um, kind of embedded commercial locations within neber- neighborhood one and two, but that's something we, we, you know, intend to look at a little bit in the next steps.
Okay, thank you. That's it for my questions.
Thanks, Lauren. Erin.
All right, well, thanks, everybody, uh, for the presentation, all this work. This is very exciting. I'll come back to that in my comments. Um, but just a couple of questions and the first one is, so we have the innovation and production hub. And how would you can compare and contrast that to the industrial, uh, institution? Because they both seem to have some industrial aspect to them as, as I've understood it so far. So can you explain the, the difference there, please?
Thank you, Mayor Brackett. So, um, the in- innovation of the production hub would allow some level of residential to be part of that. And that was coming from that mixed use industrial category that we had come out of the East Boulder Plan. Versus the industrial institution, uh, designation would just allow industrial type uses. Um, with no residential.
That makes total sense. Thank you for that. And then on the industrial institution, one thing I'm, I'm just noticing here is that like the civic institution, what that is, is, is pretty clear. Uh, you know, government building or a school, something like that. Um, and obviously the university is pretty clear. The industrial institution, it seems like that's just being, that that is being used for industrial uses in general. Rather than kind of an institution as I think about it. And so am, am I misunderstanding that? Or how is that sort of falling into the institution category?
I'll, I'll start, Mayor Brackett, and then KJ if you, um, I think that we got a similar comment from Planning Board. And I think that we're still working on those designations. And if you have thoughts on that, like what you just said, we'll take that into consideration and we might consider tweaking some of that language.
Okay, thanks for that. And then my last thing is an implementation question. Cause we're just opening things up for land use change requests. And it, I believe that's going to be under the current regime of land use, uh, our approach to land use. And then at some point, we're, as we follow through on this, we're going to, uh, propose a switch to this new approach. So on the one hand, how, how are you going to take the change requests and meld it with this shift to a different structure? And then part two of that is, as you implement the different structure, some people may squawk at what you have assigned to their parcels. And so how are you going to deal with that kind of transition and problems people might have or, uh, complexities there?
Uh, the million dollar question. Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, so a couple of, a couple of things, we, the, um, community change request for land use changes or policy changes is open currently. It's open until I believe October third, if I have that date correct. Um, and you're, you're correct, we, um, because we don't have, you know, clear guidance yet as to whether or not we are going to move forward with this, um, new framework. We wanted to make sure that it was based in, in the current existing land use designation framework that, that exists within the, uh, comprehensive plan. So we will evaluate each of those applications based on that current regime. Um, and if you recall that process, uh, we will come to city council and the planning board with a list of all of the applications that were submitted and a recommendation from staff as to which of those applications should be carried forward for more evaluation. So as an example, we might receive fifty applications, but we may only actually carry forward and evaluate five of those. At that time, once we have that determination and if we get clear direction from you and Planning Board that this new framework is something to continue and is something to develop and, and include. Then the, the, uh, applications that we receive that are carried forward for that future evaluation or additional evaluation. We would reach out to those, uh, applicants and work with them to better determine, you know, really what their vision is. And we would propose what the new scheme would be and work with them to make sure that they are comfortable with that before we bring that forward. Um, on your other question, uh, kind of the broader question of changing the land use map citywide essentially and applying new designations to properties. Um, we fully expect that there will be people that will want to review that and provide, provide comments as part of that. And so we are anticipating a full month of the review of the draft map and the draft plan in March. Uh, and then of course, there is the public hearing process as part of the adoption process. So we, we anticipate we will have about a two to three month period between the release of that initial review draft. Uh, and then ultimately moving forward into the adoption process to hopefully resolve, um, you know, any of those, any of those comments.
All right, and, and just follow up question on that, like what are you imagining for publication? Because essentially every parcel owner in the city is going to have an updated land use designation. And a lot of people may not be paying careful attention.
Yeah, so there is a requirement in the code today that we provide mailed notification to property owners if there is a land use change proposed for their property. So we will be working with our, with our teams to determine, um, essentially a mailing citywide to identify and, and notify everybody that there is a potential change to the designation that applies to their property.
That's great. Well, I hope the phone lines will be fully staffed after that comes out, because I mentioned. Thanks so much. That's all I got.
Thanks, Erin. And, um, okay, we're, we're a little over where we should be. I saw Taysha's hand was up. I don't see it now. I see Tara's hand is up. She spoke. Um, I will have a couple of things. Taysha, did you have anything? No, okay. Tara, did you have something else?
You know what I do, but you can just forget it. It's not, I'll, it's not an emergency. It's fine. Go on.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, I had just, I'll call myself. I have, uh, I think two questions. First question, um, I talked to a couple of members of the planning board who described a very rich discussion, uh, a couple of days ago on this. And I'm, um, I don't know that I've seen any kind of a debrief from that and I, you know, maybe there's just, it's been not enough time. But is there anything, um, the team can say about just kind of big picture thoughts on agree? Were Planning Board had agreement with the direction or any, you know, consternation? Or I don't know, any other highlights from that that are worth us knowing?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember. Um, and, and we apologize that there, you know, there wasn't enough time for us to turn around. Uh, a, um, meeting record or debrief of that, but I'm, I'm happy to talk through it a bit and, and certainly Sarah and Tess and Brad chime in if I miss anything. Um, I would say, you know, broadly speaking, there was, uh, general support for the idea. Certainly the, the approach to simplifying the, the, you know, the land use framework and, and reducing the number of designations. There was a lot of agreement around that and, and I think, um, uh, support for, for that approach. Uh, you know, there was some, I, I wouldn't say disagreement, but differences of opinion between, um, some members that were really enthusiastic about, um, moving away from the prescriptiveness of the, of the way our land use map works today and the designations we have. And some other members that were a bit, um, you know, nervous or wanted us to consider the potential impacts of, of, um, using broader categories that it may open the door to, you know, different outcomes that may not be in alignment with, um, uh, with community expectations and in some locations. And I would say in particular, uh, that concern was raised around recent, uh, area plans and sub community plans. So thinking specifically about Alpine Blossom and East Boulder and how the time and effort that was invested into those processes from the community, that we don't lose that, um, you know, lose that information and lose that definition that, um, that was defined and, and created through those processes. So I'd say broadly speaking, you know, there was, um, support to continue down the road of this, but also some considerations for us to think about. Um, and then a few comments on some of the specific terminology and, and things like that. You know, similar question around industrial institution that Mayor Brock had brought up that was confusing to some and things like that. Um, Brad or Sarah or Tess, anything you would add to that?
Thank you. Taysha, I have one more question. I see your hands up. Do you want to colloquy on this or shall I go? Okay, thanks. Um, my only other thought is on the, your question is on the, um, just thinking about the changing geography of our parking lots potentially. And, um, with new, uh, state and perspectively local, um, liberation of what we can do with parking. Did, has that played in much to how the, the new categories will work? Um, I guess li- largely with respect to thinking about what are currently commercial areas that would prospectively be now be new candidates for housing? Uh, and, and can you talk about that?
Yeah, I'm happy to think about that, you know, philosophically. We, I would say we haven't, um, we haven't incorporated the, um, you know, sort of the, the repurposing of parking areas, um, as much into our thinking related to the, to the designations. You know, we were very careful in the descriptions that we developed for each of the designations not to include, um, you know, any expectations or recommendations around parking, you know? So there's, there's no, there's no language in the, in the descriptions that would reference the amount of parking that would be necessary for those areas, that kind of thing. Um, you know, again, I think the land use, uh, as part of the comprehensive plan really is to establish that broad vision of the future character of an area. The specific redevelopment opportunities really present themselves, not only through the policy direction that we'll include in the comprehensive plan about, you know, expectations we have and the things that the city values and supports. Um, but also really as you get into that site specific, uh, you know, those site specific discussions where you can weigh the context of a, of a parcel by parcel analysis and, and have the conversation around how much parking is, is needed or is necessary, but also what opportunities there are to repurpose some of those areas for other uses.
And I, I'd just like to add on to that, that we've moved away from any designations that are strictly a commercial. You know, all of our hubs allow a mixed use. So basically throughout the city, there's that like hub allows that increase of residential.
Okay, thanks Tess. Yeah, that actually answered quite well. Okay, um, clock is still moving. I see a new hand up. Lauren, is that a colloquy on this one? Cause we got Taysha next for, for questions, but did you have a colloquy on the, on this one? Okay, Taysha.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you. Um, this is a question around, um, the, going back to the maps and the ability to kind of, um, do sub-maps. Is there, will there be opportunities at, in the future, in, in, in the, uh, future stage of this process where we can do kind of like sub-maps? Because I do see the possibility of, you know, culture versus arts venues, right? Um, just from accountability perspective. So I was just curious if there are, if, when we get to the policy and accountability components of this, if there will be opportunities to revisit some of these larger designations.
Well, yeah, I would say, uh, thank you for the question. I would say that, um, currently the, the, the designations as they exist today are, are very much up for discussion. And if there are, you know, if there's interest in having staff consider additional designations or refining the, the definitions and the descriptions to be more explicit about arts or other venues and things like that to be added to. This would be a great time to, to present that information to us. Um, and also I'd say broadly speaking, we still, we still very much intend to continue with, uh, area plans and sub-community plans as, as future implementation projects after the comprehensive plan. So there, there certainly will continue to be opportunities to look at, uh, smaller areas of the city, more site specific areas to, um, envision what, what those should be into the future. That would get to a little bit, uh, tighter level of detail than what would be included in the overall citywide land use map.
Okay, thank you. I'll reserve the rest of my time for comments.
Okay, very brief, briefly to Tara with the ver- for a very brief, uh, response, please.
Very briefly, I am, and I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, just curious, going back to what Mark was saying about the, um, neighborhood one. Are you saying that when this happens, that four plexes are going to be allowed in all parts of the neighborhood? Or they can be allowed? Or are you changing single family zoning? Can you just explain more what you're doing with that?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Weiner. Um, so the answer is no. The, the comprehensive plan does not change the zoning, so it would just establish a vision for, uh, potential future changes to the code that would allow duplex, triplex, squatplex, you know, cottage courts, things like that in, uh, in areas of the city. And it would be through those future processes where it would be determined if that applies neighborhood wide, city wide or only at specific locations, et cetera. So the, um, the comprehensive plan just establishes the policy to allow those types of things to occur. But then future work would, would determine exactly when and where they should be located.
Did I get Tara? Okay, thank you. So I think that takes us to the, um, the opportunity to provide comments. And can we, can somebody show the, um, the two questions we have or put them in the chat? We have two questions for council.
They are in the chat.
Oh, they're in the chat. Okay, so I'll, I'll state them, uh, just so everybody knows. So first one is, does city council support the preliminary concept, um, for revisions to the comprehensive plan? Future land use designations. Second question is, what community feedback does city council need to inform future decisions about substantial changes to policy and future land use? We have, uh, um, scheduled until seven thirty-one for this module, so that's just under thirty minutes. If people go to two, two and a half minutes or less, that would probably get it, keep us on track. And, uh, who'd like to raise their hand first? Uh, I think, I think it's on my, yeah, Mark, then Matt.
Uh, yeah, I, um, I think the preliminary concept for me requires a little more explanation. I want to understand better what the, uh, rules of engagement are going to be with respect to commercial, uh, activities within the residential neighborhoods. Is it going to be as of right anywhere? Is it going to be on specific corners? Is it going to be in, in certain areas? Okay, I, I think, uh, people need to have a, a better expectation of what's going to be coming in their area. Some areas are, are good for, uh, bodegas and some are not. And, um, I don't have a strong sense of how that shakes out here. Um, and with respect to, to question two, uh, community feedback, the more, the better. I mean, if, if, if you need to, to do another, um, statistically valid poll somewhere down the line, I would urge you to do it. Um, more data is better on something that's consequential.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, Matt, and then Lauren and Erin.
Appreciate that, Ryan. Um, yeah, uh, I mean, I like, I like where this is going. So I'm going to answer number one. I say this is, this is quite a change. Um, I will just to give my daughter a shout-out, recognize that uh, going to the thirteen designations is Taylor Swift's favorite number. So that's really good for the city. Um, but but you know, more broadly speaking, you know, I I just like where this is going. The flexibility is awesome. Um, and you know, in terms of community feedback, I think the next logical one kind of has to do with if we're going into this flexible state where we're going from a cumbersome and largely maybe contradictory land use map. I think that logically means that we need to think about massive structural or complete rewrites of Title IX and the actual building codes that feed into the very zoning and land use we have. It would be weird to have very consistent and flexible land use, but then cumbersome, clunky, and perhaps um, also, you know, uh, contradictory zoning and therefore uh, code that goes with it in Title IX. So I I could think of no better opportunity than to think about rewriting large sections of it or entirely than following the comp plan process. And then really have a clean slate for the next twenty years. So I think those things may have some logical connection to them, uh, given where we're headed. But I I like where this is headed. This is exactly the kind of thing I thought we would get to when we embarked on this process. So big credit to staff.
Thank you. Is it, sorry, is it Lo- Lauren, are you next? Is that right? Lauren, then Erin.
I think so. Thanks. Um, yeah, I'll echo a lot of what Matt said. I'm really excited about this. I um, think that this sort of gets us more in line with what typical planning policies would be around larger scale, you know, that with the maps getting more specific as um, and more fine-grained as we move through use and then zoning. Well, neighborhood plants, all of that. Um, I do have a couple of things as I read through this. I still see a lot of language that I think um, might limit future flexibility at the words like mostly, predominantly. Um, things like that that I have seen cause us problems in the past. And so I would really encourage this to focus on use specifically. Is the use housing with yards? Or I mean, I think that maybe there's different ways that we think about. Uh, I think Planning Board got into that a little bit, you know, without talking as much about density, how do we provide a little bit of predictability and a little more specifics beyond just housing? Um, but without but while preserving flexibility. Um, I think in neighborhood one, I see a little bit of a continuing struggle to define the commercial. Um, it talks about certain kinds of commercial activities being encouraged, but then says that the locations are going to be very limited. And I think that that um, sends kind of a mixed signal and would be great to clarify, maybe that's um, either describing those locations around where commercial might be allowed and removing the local hub category or mapping the local hub category and having that actually talk about a smaller scale, finer-grained um, commercial use, like the bodega or the coffee shop. Um, and then in the single family, or sorry, in the farm, in the rural lands category. Um, I think that it is important to talk about housing. It doesn't really talk about housing in it, and I think that that is a predominant use in a lot of our rural lands. So calling out single-family ADU and farmworker housing specifically would be something that I would encourage. Thank you.
Okay, I think it's Erin, then Taysha, and Tara.
Yeah, well, just again, a huge thank you. I'm really excited about this. Um, Brad, I know we talked about the possibility of doing something like this maybe a year ago. And so it's great to see this coming to fruition. I think it's a really positive step forward um, in simplification and just uh, modernizing our our approach to things. So very much in favor of it. Um, I want to echo Lauren's comments about uh, residential one and the uh, watching out for words like mostly or predominantly that that have tied us up in knots um, in some other circumstances. And I thought Lauren's comment about the residential and the uh, rural areas was a good one too, like ADUs for farmworker um, housing, for example. Um, and then I'd, I'll just come back to that uh, industrial institution label. The the label doesn't quite make sense to me as a category. So I think the, what you're trying to accomplish there is good. I'm just not sure that the the categorization is maybe the final place. But um, other than that, I'm, I think we're um, on a very positive track. It'll uh, be very good for us for the longer-term future. Um, there are going to be a lot of detailed um, implementation issues, but I have confidence in your ability to resolve those. Uh, that's what I got. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Taysha, then Tara, then Nicole.
Awesome, thank you. I echo my colleagues' um, comments regarding the um, updated land use designations. Um, the simplicity um, in in, yeah, I'm a big fan. Um, except for, as I mentioned, the need to disaggregate, so when it comes to accountability and just again, making sure that we're moving in the right direction there. Um, but um, I did just, oh, is this the time where we're supposed to talk about priority areas or no?
Yeah, well, the two, yeah, there's the two questions, so feel free to address.
I know, but those questions kind of hammer in, so, okay, good. So um, I really enjoy, I mean, I appreciated all of the priority areas that were identified. The only things that I found were missing. One, it was great to have a little bit of conversation around the Climate Action Plan. Um, a lot of that was around um, decarbonization and um, again, the scientific community and everyone else has been pretty clear on biodiversity. And I didn't see anything around that, so I would love to see something around that. Also didn't see anything around water after we just got our water supply reports. And I would imagine we're more on the severe side, um, not having a more emphasis or understanding around that water component and and how we get on the offense around that um, would be really helpful in in all these neighborhoods because they don't generate their own water in that fifteen minutes. Um, and then for the uh, agriculture, it was wonderful seeing that component in there. Again, I can't un-see food as utility, so I wasn't clear on um, just that, that lift for that. Um, and in addition, I didn't see anything around waste and waste management. So um, again, houses are great, but they produce waste. Um, also in our report, um, and in our community, we're still struggling with compost and composting. Um, and that was supposed to happen almost thirty years ago. So um, just really would love to see a little bit more around the waste component. I know it's not as sexy as some of the other components, but would love to see it nonetheless. And then um, the equity framework and analysis component. Um, wonderful to see that component there. Um, would love to see a little bit more around the financial and decision-making aspects of the of equity and not just access and um, minimum re- representation, but meaningful participation throughout. I also appreciated the tracking and the tracking of data, and I just noticed there wasn't any of that, uh, any comment of that or uh, any components around that for the other section. So again, Chris, I know that um, that might be coming further down, down the pike, so I look forward to that. Um, and just in general, the financial and fiscal con- conversations, I would love to have a a little bit more of a alignment between what we're envisioning here and what's being discussed at the Long-Term Financial Strategy Group um, around just the fis- fiscal components of it. Um, and as far as community partners, I would love to see moving forward, um, continuing to engage our nonprofit, our robust nonprofit community, our business communities. Um, I feel like we got a lot of of community um, at different intersection, and that's fantastic. Um, but I would love to see kind of the level of robustness that we had when we were trying to make decisions about the restaurant. Sorry, around minimum wage. I just thought that that level of en- of engagement by participant group was really powerful. So I would love to see something, some of the successes from that um, implemented again. But in general, just really excited about the direction. Um, oh, and then natural disasters. Not sure how that comes in, but disaster response, something around, we need to get really good at that. Needs to be in here somewhere. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Taysha, Tara, then Nicole.
I find that I, my new favorite word on city council is flexibility. And so I find this very flexible and very visionary, and I really am also very brave. Um, so I really like it. I will say that change is hard. And so in regards to what the other couns- some of the other council members have said, we'll, we'll need more detail unless we just want a general freakout by the community, if you know what I mean. Um, so that's what I would like to see. So I guess I agree with everybody, basically. That's it.
Okay, Nicole.
Um, yeah, I'm really excited by where this is going and uh, um, feel similarly to a lot of my colleagues that this is definitely moving in the right direction. Um, and you know, I recognize this is still really early in the process, and you brought it to us intentionally at an early stage. So thank you for doing that, so that we could give this sort of general feedback as you go go forward and flesh things out a little bit more. Um, but again, for me, generally, this is moving in the right direction. Um, I also, the flexibility for me was um, a key part of all of this. Um, I think that that enabling us to be more adaptable as we move forward into a more chaotic future is a really uh, uh, strength for the city and fits in with our resilience goals. Um, I'm going to be really curious to see how some of the fifteen-minute neighborhood conversations merge in with some of the concepts and things that are coming out here. Um, you know, when, when I think about the the type of city that we need to have fifty years from now, it's one where neighborhoods really are a little bit more self-contained from uh, the just resilience and disaster management perspective, right? As we get more floods, more fires, more droughts, more um, of all power outages, right? All the things that make it really hard. Um, I I I'm just really curious to see how some of that comes forward, so that we can think about neighborhoods as um, almost being uh, both community hubs as well as resilience hubs, places that can kind of exist um, on their own if they need to for a little bit of time. Um, and I was really excited about just some of the thinking around um, opening up more spaces to um, home businesses and how we can, how we can do that a little bit more. I love seeing that in there as well. I think it goes well with the idea of um, prioritizing a more inclusive economy. Um, and then as far as the the second question, um, for me, one of the things I would like to see in the community feedback flesh out a little bit more moving forward is the this demographic overlay and and how our changing demographics is um, playing into the the land use um, that we're moving forward with and uh, thinking about um, things like uh, the type of housing that people are going to need as we have an older population, uh, thinking about accessibility within that. Um, how, how are we setting up some of these land use designations to enable more accessible transportation and movement throughout, movement freedom throughout the city, to use a term I learned from Ryan. Um, and and just how are we enabling more people to live together in in these spaces so they can um, care for each other? Uh, on, and the one other thing that I'll say about the engagement um, with the the two versions of the survey, the Statistically Valid Survey and the Online Companion Survey, um, I think it's just going to be so crucial to be upfront with people who are filling out that. Uh, I mean, really both, but especially the companion survey. How is it going to be used, right? How is that information going to be used? Because if if we're um, coming away from that survey with uh, talking points, like ninety percent of respondents said one thing, it's really easy to take that and generalize it and say, wow, ninety percent of the city thinks that we should do this thing. When really it was only the people who, you know, responded to what's the convenience sample, basically. Um, so, so I think just being really clear with people. So they understand if we're going to wait the Statistically Valid Survey more in decision-making than we are with the Online Companion Survey. I think it's super important that we're upfront with people about that, um, as they are taking time to fill out that uh, the Online Companion Survey. So just a little more clarity for people on how things will be used in our decision-making process for us as well. I think that that'll be really important for us, um, just to know. But I, this is is wonderful. I love to see this uh, movement towards this uh, simplicity, flexibility. Um, and just to see all this coming together. I continue to be incredibly impressed by how quickly and thoughtfully you are all moving through this work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Erin, I see your hand is up. Do you intend that? No, okay. I think, has everybody gone except for me? Anybody else waiting? Okay, then I'll go um, I'll go last. Okay, um, I I was quite supportive of the direction of this overall before the presentation, and now I'm even, I'm even more um, enthusiastic about it. I just, I just understanding it more and seeing some of the maps and visualizations and seeing how this is um, compared. Well, as an evolution will become simpler and be more human and and natural environment-centered, creating more adaptability and flexibility. Um, so I'm overall very supportive. Um, I I did send a hotline that was a bit policy-heavy, so I'm, I know tonight, this is still about the land use map. So I'll just make a few comments on the the this map part of it. Um, so one is that the, I think a lot of the the, the map that we see and what we're organizing around reflects an underlying public transit system. Um, and I, you know, we know that greater density will help with transit to work better. And um, there's a, there's a connection with those things. So so it'll help to be more successful. So I guess I'm just interested to see more of an explicit um, connection here between the, the la- the la- the land use of the the housing, the hubs with the transit system, because the two things seem so important to one another. Um, and I would say on the, on the second question to council on where to seek feedback, I I would say this, I would say, let's, let's find um, let's find ways to ask the the community, what what would you like to see with the public transit system? What are your, what are your minimum levels of of expectations with respect to, you know, would you like to have a fifteen-minute transit all day long within a five or so minute walk from your house? And getting, getting, and you know, would you be able to like to take the bus to Eldora more easily and elsewhere and so on? Um, but just like really getting into this question of of how important is public transit working how it could if we were to invest in it to our community? Because that is integral to how we're building these, these maps, I think. So um, that's, that's, that is that point, excuse me. Um, also, I uh, in in the hotline I sent, I discussed uh, micromobility and pointed out that we've got this, this revolution of battery electric, um, micro-type vehicles. Both uh, golf cart-sized neighborhood electric vehicles, which where they're allowed to operate around the country in, you know, some communities that where they're safe, they, people love them because they're super efficient, they're, you know, cheap to buy. Um, but they don't work unless it's um, you know, they're made safe to do so in on the roads. And then secondly, we've got this explosion of e-bikes and this whole kind of range of tiny two-wheel vehicles, three-wheel vehicles. And um, I'm thinking back to the preamble, like the preamble slide about the trends that we're looking towards. And I I think this is one of those trends that as we imagine the future of Boulder, we ought to be really thinking about. Like, how do we use this electrification uh, technology to help us to get around with this a lot more efficient? That's a lot um, more affordable and um, and what does that mean for the future of land use? So I thi- again, I think that's more on like maybe the preamble of all this, but it it could be a big um, make, I guess like a mega trend of how how, what could, what could I thought what we can do? Um, on the hubs, the the hubs framework, you you actually addressed some of the the thinking I had provided in in the hotline. Um, with respect to, I I'm sort of imagining that from a, from a, you know, providing well-being to the community standpoint, uh, seems to me we could be thinking about some minimum number or share of residents being able to walk to, you know, have a five-minute walk to a coffee shop or a a grocer or um, uh, a park or, you know, a bus. Um, so I'm sort of thinking along those lines. And but then I I looked at the map, it seemed like the number of the hubs that that were shown felt kind of paltry. And I don't know if that's meant to be, we define the hubs now and then that's it for a while, but um, I would be interested to like really um, be creative and imaginative about how that we can have hubs, like we can have a lot of hubs. Um, so I'd like to maybe, yeah, put prod on that a little more. Um, and then on, okay, I just two more and I'll and I'll finish. On the subject of adaptation and resilience and that this is a big part of the plan, I I I wonder if um, it, as we're now looking at the map and and thinking about the map in terms of building from what we currently have, would this also be a good time to think about the contingency planning for if, in the unfortunate event, significant parties of, uh, parts of Boulder were affected by natural disaster and we and we really had to start fresh? Um, would we, would we want to construct things any differently? Would there be any kind of key principles that we might want to think about now as we're, as we're looking at this map that's constrained by, you know, how things currently work? So that's, I would, I I think I asked that as a question, but I would offer that as something we ought to do. Um, and then I agree with Lauren and Erin on Um, and then I agree with Lauren and Aaron on the comments about removing predominantly or mostly where it's either ambiguous or will become problematic when it ought not to be in the future. Um, and also Lauren's point about being really deliberate about the images that we end up producing, because those will become um really pow- potentially powerful frames of reference for people. Um, oh, and then finally, I just on on Nicole, I wanted to agree with her suggestion about um seeking feedback from a wide set of demographics, specifically ol- older folks and younger folks who will be becoming older as we look at our aging trends and thinking about, yeah, just there that perspective. Okay, um, I think that takes, that's the end of what I have. I don't see any more hands. So I think um Chris, I believe that takes us to the end unless Brad, is there anything else you wanna? Did you have what you need from us or anything else?
Yeah, I think uh a- absolutely, this has been a fantastic uh discussion and I just appreciative of the depth of thought and uh the direction on support for this basic concept. Uh, we will, we will be back. We'll see you many times before, but thank you for the conversation. We appreciate it.
All right, thanks Brad team, well done. Chris, can I um invite you to uh bring us to the next place?
Yeah, happy to transition us to uh our second item of the night and appreciate the conversation again. And uh thanks to the complaining team. Uh, so for this next item, uh we are excited to bring to you a whole bunch of really cool uh background analysis uh uh on healthy buildings roadmap that we are working on. So uh Jonathan is gonna tee us up here uh tonight for this item. So uh our Director of Climate Initiatives, Jonathan, take it away.
Yeah, thanks so much, Chris. I see uh my team all popped up on the screen all at once, so that's a good sign. Uh, Mayor Members of Council, nice to see you all, Jonathan Cohen with Climate Initiatives. Really just a quick intro from me on the Healthy Building, Stronger Community Roadmap. Um, you all had, I think, quite a bit of background in your memo, but I I wanna just say for those that are listening tonight, I would summarize the roadmap and tonight's discussion as really an alignment of our current and what I would say next generation building strategies that are really centered around reducing emissions, improving building health and resilience, um really focusing in on stabilizing energy costs and ensuring equity and affordability are a real central outcome to our policies. You're gonna hear this repeated often tonight, uh just like your previous conversation on the Comprehensive Plan. The roadmap is really to guide our strategies over the next decade and really beyond. And I'm super excited about the work the team has done to create this long-term vision for our buildings. Um, and I would say uh it's important to note that we've been working towards this type of an approach uh for at least a decade in parts and pieces. And again, really excited that we're kind of bringing it together tonight in an outline or a roadmap for the future. I also wanna acknowledge some of the concerns that we've heard uh about the timing of specific recommendations uh coming from our consultant team and staff. And I wanna stress that the roadmap is it's not about rushing regulatory changes. Um, and I hope that came through in the staff materials and the hotline information that was sent out earlier this week. We wanna provide enough detail to give a sense of potential future direction, but no determination's been made on the timing of specific items that may come back to council. And recognizing our constrained resources, it really makes prioritization and sequencing especially important. So just to wrap up my comments, tonight's really about sharing where we are, um checking in with council, listening to your guidance and understanding your priorities so we can really focus our efforts most effectively. So with that, I wanna turn it over to Carolyn Elam, who's gonna take you through the presentation. I'm really eager to hear council's thoughts tonight and I'll jump back with you when we get to questions. Thanks.
Good evening, check in. Does everybody see the presentation on the? Excellent.
Yep, was good to meet.
Great, thanks, everybody. Um, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm Carolyn Elam, I'm a Senior Manager here in our Department of Climate Initiatives. Um, this evening for our presentation, I'm joined by um representatives from our consultant team, Ben Brannon, um with Aroop and Jesse Platt, who's from our joint Tressel Strategy Group, um Institute for the Built Environment Team. Um, so really appreciative of the opportunity to talk to you about our roadmap project. As Jonathan mentioned, um we've got lots of eras of um work to decarbonize our buildings. We're really excited to to write the next chapter and and launch on our our next world tour. Um, so sorry, we had to do a shout out for the um Taylor Swift reference earlier. Um, I'll try and throw a few more in, um but uh no promises on that. Again, um just as a little bit of reflection, you know, this is the, we wanted to take a deliberate stop and really reflect on what we've learned um from our years of work in this space, understand and celebrate the successes we've had. Um, and then really vision forward um based on, you know, what we've learned, what we've learned from others, what we're seeing in the market, how our technology is transforming and and so we're excited to to lay out this pathway for our coming decade. Well, I'm here covering the presentation tonight. Um, you know, it would be wrong of me to um take any credit for it. Um, it's really our amazing project team that that did all the work and they're the reason we're here today. And Laurel and Crystal are are here to join us for the the discussion. Uh, these questions were in your packet and I'll come back to them, so I won't read them now. But just a reminder, we had three questions we wanted to check in with council on around this project to to get your feedback as as we seek to finalize our our draft roadmap. So we structured the the presentation tonight um to to start kind of grounding you in the background of the the roadmap project, but we're seeking to accomplish um what we have in place today in terms of programs and policies, then walk through at a high level the technical analysis we undertook, what we learned from the community from our engagement work, and then have a detailed discussion around um some of the proposed regulations that came out of that work with the analysis and the engagement, as well as some of the supporting programming um and and where we see that heading, and then dive into our conversation. And again, everything here is is really grounded around our community's adoptive goal of of driving towards carbon neutrality um by twenty thirty-five, and so that's the timeline of our roadmap, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. I do wanna say, um, you know, as we have matured our conversation around our buildings, um it is really important to understand that we're we're no longer talking about just emissions. We really need to ground our work in our equity goals and our resilience goals. And and with that in mind, you know, I I just really wanna spend a moment, this is a tough conversation to have because we know um to hit our goals, we're not on the pace to do so. The only way we're gonna get there, we we can't get there through voluntary programs, the only way we can get there is um by applying regulation in combination with um supportive systems. And it's a tough time to have those conversations and we understand that. At the same time, you know, it's also important to understand that a lot of the discussion we have is is kind of grounded in the biases that come from our our lived experiences, right? So um I, like many, um grew up here in the Front Range, I enjoy, you know, there were a few uncomfortable days in the summer and you could always cool your house open your window. I didn't have air conditioning until, you know, a decade or so ago. Um, but the reality is the climate that our lived experience is based on and and this beautiful picture on the left um sits within is no longer Boulder's climate. Um, we've already experienced um more than doubling of days over ninety-five degrees. Um, we see as we talked to you in um last December, we've seen a tenfold increase in fire risk days. The reality is our current climate temperatures is really in the range of Boulder, I mean of Pablo's historical trends, right? So think of us as, you know, Pablo designed their buildings and their architecture and their infrastructure for a climate that we're now experiencing. And we're actually on a trajectory that by the end of the decade or shortly thereafter, we could look more like Albuquerque in terms of our number of days and extreme temperature um days. And I want you to take a look at the buildings and just notice um some differences, right? Our buildings were not built for the climate we're headed for. Um, and there's consequences that come with that, like many of our our vulnerable folks do not have access to air conditioning, our buildings aren't resilient um to uh extreme weather. And to meet the challenges of rising temperatures and weather extremes, we're gonna experience very high um cost of energy if we don't make change, right? The buildings on the right um have more reflective roofing. Um, we certainly, you can't see it on the photos, but they have different um space conditioning as well. So our buildings, um, you know, why do we tackle our buildings? Uh, we've talked about this in the past, but looking at the chart on the lower right, our buildings are nearly two-thirds of our community emissions with commercial and industrial buildings being nearly half of our community emissions. Um, but as I mentioned, as we look at this, we're looking beyond just greenhouse gas emissions. What we really learned um and and seeing even more evidence of in, you know, recent years is just uh this understanding. And I should say, this is all about natural gas use. You'll hear a lot about natural gas in this presentation. But our understanding is really matured that our use and our dependency of on natural gas in our buildings for space water conditioning, um cooking, uh other uh appliances, whether that be clothes drying or um decorative fireplaces, are contributing to both indoor and outdoor air pollutants and are a leading cause now of respiratory illness, particularly in children. Um, but also presents an old a risk to older adults. There's been analysis that shows, you know, that gas appliance use in buildings is contributing nearly two billion dollars um a year in annual costs to Colorado um for healthcare and mortality impacts. Um, we know that our buildings aren't built, many of our buildings aren't able to withstand some of the extreme weather events we have. We saw more than four hundred um of our mobile homes damaged during the Marshall Fire. We also saw damage to to fixed foundation structures. And as I mentioned, um, we're dependent largely on natural gas, it's a commodity. Um, so unlike um electricity, which is regulated um by the Public Utilities Commission and the rates are set explicitly by the commission, uh natural gas is broken up into two components and we have to pay for the commodity fuel. We saw during winter storm Yuri, and then again during the invasion of the um by Russia of the Ukraine, substantial market stresses on natural gas that caused the doubling and tripling of many of our community members' heating bills overnight. Um, that that kind of um the immediate stress and and impact has a really material impact on on the economy and on those um community members' ability to to just survive um during some of these extreme temperatures. And the cost of maintaining our gas system is growing, right? So we we may think of natural gas as the historical affordable um energy source and we were told it was our clean fuel and reliable fuel. The reality is, we look to the future, things are changing and they're changing very rapidly. So from our roadmap approach, this is really a phased approach. We started um with the technical analysis, looking at our building stock and policy, and doing a policy and financial analysis on it. Then we dove into community engagement based on some of the recommended strategies that came out of that analysis. We're here tonight to talk to you and get your feedback on this work. That'll check our community engagement box, box will synthesize this into the roadmap. And then as Jonathan mentioned, like this is to to develop the prioritized set of strategies that will be in the roadmap. This is really envisioned as an iterative process. Um, we will then take the strategies we identify as the priorities in the roadmap and run them back through a similar process. So do do deeper analysis, do more engagement to the with the community to really design how we would implement such actions. So you'll be hearing from us again around those strategies. Can we hired um two uh great teams to support us? Aroop, um we'll talk about the technical analysis and as I said, Tressel Strategy Group and IBE, um who supported our community engagement. Uh, we did run this project through the um uh equity ins- the racial equity instrument before we launched it. We continued to test in. Um, we did set when we launched the project and the analysis, a a series of equity guardrails. Um, you know, one way to think about this is I I learned an important lesson in our past when we focused just on emissions. Um, what we ended up doing with our building codes by setting the most stringent requirements for the largest homes was make those most affluent in our community the most resilient, right? They've got the best homes, the most efficient homes, they're they're electric, they've got solar. Um, and we can't make those um same mistakes in the future. We need to make sure we're moving all of our building stock bar, we need to emphasize the buildings that are most vulnerable and then we need to put the supportive programs in place to uh to meet those needs. Uh, I won't spend too much time on this, but this will be what's basically in the roadmap. It's a ten-year timeline, we'll outline the policies, programs, uh the the costs we see of transitioning our buildings as well as the engagement that we commit to um as we further advance any policies that are represented there. Uh, I won't spend much time on this, I touched on this in the um conversation, but again, we we are starting from scratch. So part of the grounding was to to look at what we're already doing today, what we've learned from that. So this slide shows the three key regulatory approaches we have in place around decarbonizing our buildings, our energy conservation codes, um which make sure that, you know, when someone is voluntarily um taking an action around a building, whether it's building new, adding in addition or renovating, um they're getting the best outcomes possible in terms of um climate mitigation and resilience. We have our Building Performance Ordinance, which regulates our commercial buildings. Um, this requires benchmarking and a series of prescriptive, cost-effective um energy efficiency improvements. And then smart regs, um which covers our rental housing. And so this sets uh minimum performance standards for rental housing units. We do offer supportive programs, so we have a suite of residential programs that we implement um ourselves as well as in partnership with Boulder County Energy Outreach Colorado and Excel Energy, um with a emphasis and growing emphasis on on equity-supported programs such as our uh mobile home, healthy and resilient mobile homes program. Similarly, on the commercial side, again, in partnership with those same partners, we offer support for our businesses. Again, emphasis on on our small businesses with some enhanced programs around equity. Um, roughly between our residential and commercial voluntary programs, about a third of our climate tax tax dollars get reinvested in the community and then we're leveraging substantial funding from Excel and other partners. So with that, I am going to transition over to to Ben Brannon to to walk us through the technical al- analysis. Ben, and you can just tell me when to switch the slides.
Thanks, Carolyn, uh and hello, council members. Um, so I'm representing the technical consulting team here and we're gonna talk through a few of the key uh findings of of our analysis. So starting with a building stock analysis, which is really to understand the breakdown of all of the buildings in the city today, uh combined with a financial analysis of what it takes to implement some of these uh energy conservation measures or retrofit packages in order to achieve the decarbonization goals um of the city. Um, we also did a review of program and policy from around the country to provide some suggestions and recommendations um to the city and the broader team into how to uh encourage these um the residents to adopt these voluntarily if possible, um and with with regulation otherwise. Uh, so the next slide, first, um just a simple breakdown of how the building, how the city is broken down uh between residential and commercial by area uh and and greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, it's tempting to look at a city like Boulder and most cities, um and you see way more residential buildings than you do commercial um and want to focus on those those explicitly. Um, and while by no means am I suggesting to ignore that, um it's 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 interesting to look at the fact that there are roughly uh three-quarters of the city is residential, um but roughly three-quarters of the emissions uh from buildings comes from from commercial buildings. Uh, in the next slide, um further how these are broken down into their current uh HVAC usage. Uh, commercial buildings are very predominantly um heated and cooled with conventional gas systems with only fifteen percent using electric heating. And the vast majority of that fifteen percent right now is electric resistance heating, um as in not heat pumps. And while electric resistance heating is one hundred percent efficient, which sounds great, uh heat pumps are three hundred percent efficient um or so in terms of using energy, similarly with water heating and nearly all of that is electric resistance. On the residential side, uh about a third have all-electric heating. Again, the the vast majority right now is electric resistance. Um, and on the cooling side, about half of Boulder's buildings last lack central air conditioning. Um, the other half do have uh potentially evaporative coolers, which is energy efficient, but but has a water demand or um inefficient window window units. Um, regarding mobile homes, uh there's no cooling in about twenty-six percent of those. Um, and sort of pulling that all together, about twenty-five percent of housing in Boulder is at risk to extreme heat right now. And that's not even accounting for um Carolyn's point a little while ago about how we are moving into a much, much hotter climate. Um, so this this image on the right um is is one visualization of projections in terms of how our um heat waves or days over ninety-five degrees are projected to increase uh going forward, which which makes those um those houses and buildings without cooling even more susceptible. So our next step was looking at, okay, we know, we know where the city's at, we know uh what needs to be, some options, what needs to be done. Um, how do we actually achieve that at a city level? Uh, so on the very small text on the left, we're looking at a plot of uh ECMs or energy conservation measures, basically in retrofits to make buildings more efficient. And how do we, how can we package these together and apply them to buildings throughout the city? Uh, we ran several iterations uh kind of grouping these, first starting with replacing gas heating units um with heat pump ones, then replacing uh the same with domestic hot water um and on and on to to have various other improvements to buildings. Um, what we found is that um it is, of course, very achievable of a goal from a technical standpoint. We know how to do it, we know. What we found is that it is, of course, very achievable of a goal from a technical standpoint. We know how to do it. We know the technologies to do so. And there are are ways to make this more or less cost effective. What we found with the the bare minimum electrification pathway here, just to throw out a scary big number, would cost about four and a half billion dollars. Absolutely max, if you were to go out today and just magically implement all of these changes. Just to caveat that a little bit, that does not account for intelligent ways of 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 promoting these changes, such as waiting until a system needs to be replaced anyway, and mandating that it will be replaced with a new equipment, new high efficiency equipment. So I think with that, I'm going to pass it over to Josie to talk about our engagement efforts.
Thanks, Ben, and good evening, members of council, mayor. Thank you for having us. I'm Josie Plout, and I'm the co-director at the Institute for the Built Environment. I'm here to represent the Tressel and I B E consulting team who did the community engagement. I'll be sharing a high level summary of what we did, what we learned and the recommendations that we heard from the community as it relates to the overall policy direction for the roadmap. So we conducted comprehensive outreach using a variety of outreach methods, including interviews, focus groups, presentations, a community questionnaire, and a variety of online media. Overall, we are very pleased with the level of engagement from the community and the quality of information that we gathered. We saw that there is receptivity to electrification and to some new regulations. Heat pump technology, while it's not new, is new to many in this market, and the city will need to work to address the prevailing concerns, myths and myths misinformation that are circulating within the community. And as you can see here, there are a variety of ideas that are out there that will need to be addressed in the communications of any future policy changes as the roadmap roadmap develops. So we have developed a comprehensive set of recommendations that's much more detailed in the report that you all can read in your spare time. But to let you know that we, you know, we took everything that we heard from all the community engagement and we matched that with the roadmap and and the the plans the Arab developed. And to highlight just a few of those key recommendations, we we recommend that the city support any new regulations by helping to reduce complexity of compliance through program design. So we heard a lot of fatigue around compliance and and systems and navigating all of those. So ways to simplify and streamline will be incredibly important. Also, offering technical support and navigation assistance. These are fairly complex and nuanced decisions and conversations, and so it's going to be important that any new programs include those technical support and navigation programs to to help the community adapt. Also ensuring that there's some flexibility, obviously, buildings are built at all sorts of different times and all sorts of different ways. And so there need to be options for people to change and adapt the requirements to meet their specific needs. In addition, we want to provide assurances that we're careful to avoid negative economic impacts for our low-income community members and small businesses. And then a final consideration here is to manage the unintended consequences of additional regulation. So for example, we want to be conscious about adding cost and complexity that could result in building owners actually just avoiding doing upgrades altogether because the cost of doing so is too high. You can find additional information about all of this again in the report. So so just to kind of wrap things up here, while climate and emissions reductions are important to some members of your community, the the messaging here for this program should be as much about comfort, including health and safety, as well as affordability and cost stabilization, rather than focusing exclusively on climate and decarbonization. And then as the program develops, it'll be important to focus on early wins. Homes already have electric and switching those two alternatives, especially at end-of-life replacement, as Ben was mentioning. And then we suggest using behavior science that employs techniques like peer influence, being conscientious of payback periods for businesses, and providing supports that matter most to everyone, including rebates and technical assistance.
Great. Thanks, Josie. And I'll take it back up. And just a reminder to to counsel, we did share via hotline, the the full technical report from A-Rip and the executive summary from that Josie referenced. So happy to answer questions about that as well. So to wrap us up and kind of bring it all together, here's the the first set of recommendations that we, you know, received as a result of the A-Rip analysis, as well as some of staff's recommendations on on whether we advance those into the roadmap and and do further development. So starting at a high level, there's a number that were related to adoption of building performance standards. And again, building performance standards are are typically setting a target at a future date certain where a certain either energy use per square foot or emissions per square foot target needs to be met. The benefit of building performance standards or BPS approaches is you set a target but allow flexibility for how it's met. And so we would move away from our current prescriptive requirements where we tell building owners, you know, you will do this lighting upgrade and you will do this study to allow them to design the path to their future. As I think I mentioned in both the memo and the hotline, for our over 50,000 square foot buildings, they're already regulated by the state. We would have the opportunity to consolidate regulation and and have them only have to report to the the city. They could meet the state requirements in that mean way. So we're thinking about reducing regulatory complexity. Staff did recommend a phased approach where we start with the largest ones that are already regulated by the state and already have targets set for them, and then phase in requirements for smaller buildings. And then inherent in this is, again, reducing regulatory complexity. So buildings that, for example, if we adopt a building performance standard for multifamily, we wouldn't also regulate them under smart regs if they happen to be a rental property. So so doing some cleanup there. As we go forward, we'd have the opportunity to adopt the state targets as is, or develop more stringent ones based on community goals. A-Rip did recommend applying a building performance standard to residential. And as I think you saw, staff don't recommend proceeding with that at this time, just given, I think, to Ben's point, the the low emissions associated with the sector, combined with the the high regulatory cost that would come with trying to regulate 20,000 individual buildings. The other set of recommendations are an end-of-life equipment replacement. And so this would be the most cost-effective time to intervene. So instead of somebody being able to go and replace a gas appliance, they'd be required to do electric. We need to put a lot of thought into how to face such a thing in when the appropriate times would have be to have the target, how we want to ensure we're not creating a space where people are just working outside of a permit process because we want better outcomes. So there need to be a lot of development around this one. I mentioned the air pollution standard. We do have regulatory authority to adopt such, although it would be complex. And effectively, the the NOx appliance standards are duplicative of the electric requirements that we have. So we would only move forward with this if, for example, we lost a federal predemption challenge to our current building codes or any new ordinance we might adopt that requires all electric. We do think we need to do some update to smart regs, initial, you know, relative load left in terms of updating our checklist, which currently incentivizes gas appliance use and adding in requirements or opportunities around electric, efficient electric solutions. The checklist would only apply to new rentals. So we are proposing initially that we would go back and and regulate all of our currently licensed properties. But we would do more analysis to understand how, for example, if we move forward with end-of-life equipment, what additional needs we really have. In particular, in the the rental licensing space, we are concerned about the cooling access. And I think that's something we definitely want to further explore. And the final policy is a time of sale requirement, which requires some kind of audit or upgrade at a time of sale. And we do think this is an interesting one to further explore. And it could potentially be explored with similar requirements, for example, wildfire hardening. And so we're not recommending moving it forward as the first by continuing to monitor what some others are doing in this space and understand the mechanics of how we might implement such a program. Can we agree with some supports and guardrails, as Josie mentioned, making sure that we're doing everything to understand the displacement risk to tenants or rising cost risks to tenants and thinking about supportive programming around that. We are preempted from doing much in terms of limited rents, but we can do things through voluntary strategies. We also agree with recommendations to prioritize the limited city investment towards those most in need and rely on others like Excel and other programs to support community-wide adoption and programs and coupling solar with electrification, particularly for low-income households to provide that bill stability. Recommendations around workforce development, we agree we need a bigger and more trained workforce if we're going to implement the changes that are necessary. We need good outcomes. And so there's two recommendations, one around growing workforce and the other is making sure that those jobs are available. You know, they're good paying job opportunities, pathways to to business ownership are available to everybody and by providing services. While we don't think this is the role the city should take on, and we do see a lot of opportunity through our regional partners, such as workforce Boulder County, our Dr. Cog and others to to really emphasize the opportunities around job training. These weren't actions identified by A-Rip, but what staff wanted to identify. So when it's continuing to advocate for financing solutions, as Ben mentioned, this is a very big price tag to make these transitions. Addressing the the barriers in terms of upfront costs is is critical. We certainly support the one-stop shop and are looking to our Western City campus and looking forward to when we do have that navigational support there. And then, as I mentioned, monitoring cooling for all. I'll wrap this up with just a summary of our board feedback. We did talk with our environmental advisory board several times throughout this process to get their feedback. We also met with our housing advisory board. You know, generally, I would sum this up as you know, I I think we all collectively have concern about regulation, overregulating, and 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 I'll say, doing it to the point where we're driving our problem just out of our community to a worse outcome for us and and for the our goals. So really thinking about how we couple, you know, carrots and sticks together, building on care learning, considering and really trying to simplify as much as possible. We did certainly hear, though, you know, we have a significant portion of our our population here in Boulder that don't control their housing stock and and can't live their values because they choose to live in 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 rental housing. And so I think we need to be very conscious about that as well. So with that, I will bring us back to the council questions and happy to answer questions and apologies, I know I ran a few minutes over, but thank you for bearing with us as we do transitions and looking forward to our our discussion.
Thank you, Carolyn team, for a very rich and great discussion. So I propose we do clarifying questions first and then address the three questions to council in one go after that. Unless there are any objections to that approach. Okay, who would like to raise their hand for a question? I think I have Mark and then Nicole.
Really, just a couple of questions. Do we have any kind of estimate of what it would cost for, say, a 2,000 square foot or a 2,500 square foot home to transition from gas to electric? When we talk about either promoting or compelling that kind of transition, what kind of cost are we imposing upon people?
Yes, we do. And Ben, I mean, you can jump in here, but first, you have technology-wise. You know, if we're talking about a home that has a gas furnace, a gas water heater, a gas stove, which is probably the most common configuration, we don't see a lot of gas dryers, although there's some. I think there is, there's a potential that there would have to be an electrical upgrade for that home. And we typically see those on the order of around $5,000 if you have to do a service panel upgrade. On the appliance side, the incremental costs are 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 there. You know, assume, you know, you're you're spending between $10,000 and $20,000 to replace a furnace, air, well, close to $20,000 if you have a furnace and air conditioner, a little bit more if you're putting in a heat pump. Similarly, you know, about 1,500 on a gas water heater, about 2,500 on a heat pump water heater. Stoves are are pretty on par, other than the electrical work, depending on the features you're seeking. Right now, the incentives, you know, for example, through Excel, you can actually save money on the water heater replacement. You can save money if you're, for example, replacing a gas furnace and a air conditioner unit with a heat pump. With those incentives, it'll actually cost you less to put the electric alternatives in, other than the electric panel upgrade that I talked about. Anything you would add, Ben?
I can add just very briefly that you you basically described my house. And so I can say, a few years ago, it was $15,000 or so without an electrical upgrade. That was also a kind of top-of-the-line heat pump, because I'm a mechanical engineer and an energy nerd. I'll also add that we did some assessments specifically to that point. I can't quote the numbers right now, but we ran a few case studies of a single-family home and apartment, doing those as illustrative examples and are planning on on publishing them in the roadmap to help help readers.
And that does seem to be a a little bit of a stout expenditure. But this is
Well, yeah, and just noting that that expenditure occurs if you have to replace your gas equipment as well. Much of our market is driven by labor costs at this this juncture, not equipment costs. So so I think that's anybody who's had to replace a water heater or furnace recently probably knows what I'm speaking of as well.
You know, because my concern is that we we can't even require property owners to pull out their Junipers. How are we going to get them all to do a remodel of their house, pull out these systems and install new systems? And there will be a cost. It may it may be more, maybe a little less, but how do we get that done?
Yeah. And I also just want to be, I mean, not every home is going to require a panel upgrade and it it's really going to depend on the vintage of the home and and the service. We've seen, we've seen full retrofits on 150 watt panel as well. So it's it's just really a little bit, it varies a little bit.
Okay. My only other question is, I did not see a lot of conversation about building materials that can assist in either reducing GHDs or being more environmentally friendly. If I'm not mistaken, Lauren, you might know better than I, I think part of the Alpine-Balsam project is being built with my favorite cross-laminated timber. And that may be the first of its kind in Boulder. So we're we're kind of doing it there. And I'm just wondering why there's not more conversation about the materials that we have today or anticipate in the future that can address some of this problem.
Yeah, and we do have a separate project looking at the embodied carbon of of building materials. So we didn't try and seed it here in this roadmap around just the electrification and efficiency side. But definitely agree with you that that's important work and and we continue to advance that. And I don't know when our team will be ready to come back and talk about that, but I definitely agree with you.
And that's the, that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Nicole, and then Erin and Terriff.
Thank you, and thanks so much for the presentation. I have some kind of more more general, big-picture questions about this. So I attended a presentation of the Excel Advisory Group a few weeks ago, right? And one of the things that Excel was talking about was the significant increase in demand that they're anticipating, especially as cities do start changing to, to require more electrification of of all kinds of things. And I guess that thinking about this from a vulnerability perspective, right? What does it mean as we start moving more things to electrification for an infrastructure that we don't control that is out to make a profit on on people and community? I mean, how how do we think about this, right? What assurances are we sort of getting as we're moving in this direction that will benefit? our energy utility, that that they can handle this, that they will provide renewable sources of energy and not alternatives that that may be, you know, continue to be harmful, because ultimately, right, where the energy is coming from or where the electricity is coming from determines how how clean it is and how we're getting to our goal. So I guess it's just around like, what's the where does that come in, right? What what kinds of assurances do we have about reliability that as we're, you know, in fifty years in a different place and things were electrified, how do we know the system's going to be reliable? We're not going to be having public safety power shutdowns all the time, and you know, people will be able to to make use of all the electricity.
Yeah, I mean, those are amazing questions and definitely ones we heard extensively as we talk to community. You know, the concerns about is the grid ready? How's the grid going to be ready? What's electricity going to cost and is the system reliable? And I want to, you know, I'm the first to admit and apologies to those who live around the Table Mesa area today. I understand you had a lengthy power outage. You know, it's a work in progress, and I have spent every day this week at the Public Utilities Commission hearing on Excel's distribution system plan, which lays out a lot of what we're talking about, which is the investments that are needed to get Excel off their heels in terms of writing the distribution system for our future. And, you know, it's a really robust discussion and I'm optimistic that we're heading in the right direction in terms of investments to prepare the grid, to prepare and ensure it's reliable and to really start to think about different models that will help us mitigate the cost of doing that. And so, like I said, it's imperfect at this point and there's a lot of attention being paid to it, certainly. And I think a little bit of what you're seeing is kind of the combination. So as we talk about decarbonizing our buildings, they're contributing to to some of what you see, but so is electric vehicle adoption. You know, and I think those two things together, I mean, that attention has to be paid at the state level to very much address the issues you're talking to. So I do think it's about planning. You know, we have a whole team on the city side who participates in those Public Utilities Commission processes to make sure we're advocating for that. And, you know, it's like I said, it's not going to be fixed tomorrow, but I'm optimistic we're on the correct trajectory there. And Excel's very committed to doing that, obviously. You know, the more infrastructure, the more electrification, the more sales, you know, it benefits them as well. And so I think we're all committed to that trajectory and just trying to place the right tools so they can get us there.
Yeah, and then I guess sort of a follow-up question, right? They were saying that to meet the anticipated need, we were going to need something like nine million more solar panels in the next ten years or so, right? Which seems like a lot, especially in the current federal climate. And I mean, what is the how do we know that this, that our energy is going to be coming from clean sources, right? Given that we don't control it and just have influence, so.
Yeah, I mean, I obviously can't speak for them. I can certainly speak for what I, you know, what I see, what I hear. I mean, I don't think a utility like Excel changes course due to one administration. They 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 didn't make the decision to move towards renewables solely focused on the environmental attributes. It's good for the bottom line, and I think it's going to remain good for their bottom line. So I do think we're a little bit of a bump in the road right now that we all need to be really concerned about. But also, I'm not seeing any real course correction from them. They certainly are going to struggle to get materials. There's going to be, you know, some impact, but you know, we're certainly going to be paying close attention to that. I do think it's worth noting in particular today that, you know, even with today's grid mix, electric solutions are cleaner than our natural gas solutions. You know, and that was true years ago when we were only at like twenty percent renewables, and we're closer to fifty percent now. And so we can reduce emissions, we can accomplish our goals, moving to electric even if we don't get to the hundred percent on our current, you know, on our goal side, but I still believe we're heading there.
Thank you.
Okay, Erin and then Tara then Matt.
Great. Well, thanks for the presentation and all the excellent work that you've been doing on this. And just to follow up from the end of Nicole's question, just quickly, aren't there renewable requirements in statute for Excel's energy mix that they would be required to comply with?
Yeah, so there's there's the eighty percent emissions reduction requirement that is in statute, which is what their current plans actually overshoot at this point. There's certainly their commitments to us. And then I think, you know, we're anticipating additional state legislation that lays out the pathway beyond twenty thirty, moving all electric providers in Colorado closer to zero emissions by twenty thirty-five and twenty forty. So again, I think Colorado is going to continue to regulate it, and I think Excel is going to continue to be on a trajectory that's better than what the state requires.
All right, well, and Nicole, thank you for those very insightful questions. I appreciate those. My one thing I wanted to check in on was about the end-of-life replacement requirement that's being proposed, and I heard you say that that would need to be approached cautiously, which I appreciate you thinking that way. But what about, is part of your mix of thinking about this, about whether there might be some kind of exception process, like if you had some older house that didn't have the infrastructure to support, you know, heat pump up, and we got a couple emails about this. So is that part of what you're thinking about is you might implement that?
Yes, you know, I think right now, like Denver, for example, has adopted an end-of-life requirement predominantly on the commercial side. And our experience, you know, on the commercial side is there's largely a lot more proactive capital planning and and replacement. So certainly think of that as an early, but there definitely needs to be, you know, exceptions for emergency, for technical infeasibility and some constraints, and we would need to work to develop what that looks like before we propose implementing something.
Great, thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, Tara, then Matt, then Taysha.
So my first question is, is are there any other towns around here that are going from just incentives to regulating, to regulations? Wait, let me take myself off of
Yes, so as I mentioned just a second ago, so Denver adopted their building performance standards. They apply to similar class of buildings we've referenced here. So all commercial and multifamily buildings and their regulations have been in place for a few years now. They've also adopted end-of-life replacements requirements for Collins, Aspen, potentially Lakewood. And I want to say there's a couple other communities, Laurel, if you remember off the top of your head.
State of Colorado.
Yeah, the state that have adopted building performance standards or in the process of adopting building performance standards.
I guess I'm referring to residential and the what Erin was just talking about.
Yes, so there's others talking about it. Nobody has implemented it here yet. I think we're all in the the space of knowing it's the pathway we need to go towards eventually. But to Erin's point, we need to understand the technical challenges to it. I think we all know we face a lot of issue in unpermitted work going on in the residential space. We don't want to worsen that. And we also know that we need to address the equity issues around the older homes that just don't have the ability and the navigation. I mean, I'm not proposing that this is something that would happen tomorrow. I think we want to, you know, talk about like by twenty thirty-five, send the right market signals so that we can start to engage in the discussion. That's really what we're talking about.
So ten years from now.
Yeah, something more like that, correct? Giving people enough lead time to plan for, make sure we've got the right infrastructure in place to support them if we were to move down that path.
Can I just jump in and add one little piece of color to this excellent question? I think it'd be very easy for someone watching this conversation and even for you all, council members, to assume the roadmap is just going to be adding more regulation onto our current suite of regulations. And in fact, the roadmap actually is to take a really good consolidated look, and there may be some packaging of existing regulations, some may actually go away. And so it really is to reorient our existing regulations and think about where we need those enhancements moving forward. So I just want to make that clear that especially to people that might be watching to say, oh, great, we're going to have more and more and more regulation. That's not really what the roadmap is intended to do. There may be some additional regulation that we would bring back to council for your consideration. But ultimately, this is really just looking at a comprehensive view that helps us achieve those goals. So I just wanted to add that piece. Thanks.
So, okay, so let's take, for instance, in my house, my husband, he's a lover of all gas appliances. So we have only gas appliances, everything is gas. So when my boiler stops working, let's say, and I have to switch to electric, then I have to switch all my appliances to electric. How does that work?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd have to to design it, but you know, conceptually, what we've seen, like what Denver did is they started with water heaters, which is a more
So once you get the water heater, do you have to then change all your appliances at that time?
No, no, we would have, this would only look at like when a piece of equipment dies or is due for replacement. That's what we mean. It wouldn't trigger other appliances to have to be replaced at the same time.
So can you have
Like in year ten, the water heater might go out, you know, your boiler may have another twenty years on it. When it, and you know, maybe the regulation would require it to be replaced. You know, if it were to apply to gas stoves, which is uncertain, you know, when your stove needed to be replaced, like, so everything would be on a different timeline.
Oh, you don't have to do it at the same time?
No. That's not something we would anticipate proposing.
Okay, so there are state targets and you want to be more stringent than the state targets? Is that what you're saying?
I would say it this way, I think we have the option of either adopting the state's says or being more stringent. We can't be less stringent and accomplish the regulatory streamlining, because the state would supersede us.
So you're asking
To get our targets, we would need more stringent targets than the states, because their goals are less aggressive than ours.
Right, but when it comes to pollution in general, what Louisville does and what we do. So I guess the question is, is how much do we push? This is a real question. Knowing, let's say, that Louisville never, I don't know anything about Louisville's, what they're going to do, but they never change. So what is the benefit pollution-wise for us to be, let's say, the only city around here that does this? Besides the fact that you say, and I'm not saying you're wrong, that it's not even good for you to have gas appliances in your home.
Yeah, and just for clarification, are you still talking about the residential side or the commercial side or both?
The residential.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's one of the conversations we would want to have before we ever brought something back to council is where are we at relative to our peers? Is this going to have the outcome we want? So again, it's more of a I think to Jonathan's point, at this point, none of these are pre-decided that they would ultimately become adopted, but rather, these are the priority actions we would further develop with the community and seek to understand. So just to really ground that, we certainly know that there's barriers to the end-of-life replacement. We also know that if we don't get off of gas appliances and we don't help particularly our most at-risk community members get off of gas appliances, then, you know, we're going to have all our commercial buildings coming off of the gas system because of the state's regulations. And our, you know, most vulnerable residents are going to be left with the bill for maintaining the gas system, and that's a bad outcome as well. So we're just trying to think of different ways to stimulate an outcome when it's most cost-effective. That's all we're intending with that.
Why would the most vulnerable have to be most responsible? Can you explain what you mean?
Yeah, so if you have a giant gas system right now that serves gas to a large number of customers, and as certain customers come off that gas system, there's fewer sales to spread the cost of maintaining that system.
I see. Okay, and the last thing I have to ask, and this is a second, I promise you, Ryan, is so during, you know, everybody's PTSD experience of the Marshall fires, and I, we had put on our gas fireplace before the electricity shut off, and it stayed on the whole time, and it warmed our house. So why would I, I'm assuming other community members want to know this as well, why would I want to? Why would I, right now I have diversification, let's say, right? So if I don't have, if the power shuts off, at least my house is warm if I remembered to put my gas fireplace on before the power went out. Why would I want to change that?
Yeah, it's get a wood pellet stove, it's far safer for you, but there's a few things. So there's reasons that most gas appliances already today don't work when the power's out. Like you cannot, they will not operate, and there's two key reasons for that. First, you don't want people attempting to light an appliance that's not intended to be manually lit. You can, you can get, cause flashback, get severe burns and potentially kill somebody. The second issue, and hopefully you're in an older, somewhat leaky home, is when you're using your gas appliance when none of your other mechanical systems are working, you're actually getting toxic gases into your living space. Because when you do gas combustion, you're producing carbon monoxide and other pollutants. And so if you don't have other systems drawing air in and out of your home, you're building that up in your space. And so those are the two reasons it's not the best idea. And of course, as you noted, your gas appliance only works because you happened to have it on when the power went out. And then I want to know what kind of gas fireplace you have, because the one in my home barely beats the air infiltration from the dog door.
Okay. Anything else, Tara? Can we move on to Matt? Okay, Matt and then Taysha.
Thanks, Ryan. Good questions. I just want to take it back on the grid reliance issue, and I'm just sort of wondering about this roadmap. And it also concerns me relatedly to like transit-oriented communities. We're going to build all this housing, like we need guarantees that the transit is going to be there. Otherwise, we're building housing that's going to be car-centric. And so I think similarly here, how do we scale this roadmap with grid reliance? Is really kind of what I, is what I'm kind of asking, because I worry that if we go this whole way and like today, for no real apparent reason, we had, felt what I had to feel like half a dozen questions from parents at kid pickup of why the power was out over Table Mesa, I didn't have the answer. And then we, you know, a few weeks ago, when it wasn't that hot, the power went out and we get an email, hey, turn up your thermostat, because of the high demand. So the reliance and robustness of the grid is a issue. And so I just want to make sure we don't have all this investment when the reliance to make it worthwhile won't, may not be there. And so how do we scale this? So it's really a question, but can we scale this program with reliance and Excel's measurements? So when they hit a threshold, we can sort of work in lockstep to make sure we're staying in line and not way over in front of our skis, metaphorically speaking.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take this in two parts. So first, you know, just for clarity, we should have a reliable grid system, right? That's what an urban community should expect. So there's, and it matters whether you have gas appliances or electric appliances for the conversation. Councilmember Weiner and I just had, which is, you know, gas appliances require electricity to work just as electric appliances do. And so, you know, this is our work with Excel as our partner at the Public Utilities Commission to understand and drive investment in the distribution system to improve its reliability. You know, we've seen our utility propose a substantial increase in investment, and that's in response to a Senate bill that was co-sponsored by Senator Fenberg in twenty twenty-four and the Denver senator as well. And recognition that we don't have adequate investment in the system at this point, it needs to be fixed. And we need to focus it on that. The second part of your question has to do with as we increase load through electrification, is the grid ready to support it? And that's really, again, working with Excel and understanding, you know, the timing of when we may roll out things, where we want to target programs first, making sure that the systems are there to support them. And so that's, you know, where we would design from a city perspective, how we roll it out, how we're communicating where those loads are going to come on, and making sure that the infrastructure investments have been made to support it. So that would be, you know, some strategic planning.
Matt, anything else from you? Okay, on to Taysha and then Lauren.
Awesome, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Um, uh, I primarily have comment, uh, comments, but I only had one question and that was really around, um, something that was said about electrification and, um, Nicole, you touched on this a little bit around, um, how do we ensure that the electric is, or, or that the energy that we're producing is clean? And one of the responses was electrification. And I just, again, wanted to emphasize that um, natural gas right now is one of the primary fuels you di- used for electrification. So what are we doing to differentiate um, between electrification using natural gas and re- electrical electrification using renewables?
Yes, so you know, right now, our, our grid mix, as you, as you know, is, um, you know, still got coal, natural gas, renewables. And, um, you know, most hours of the day have emissions associated with them. As we look to what Excel's put forward and, and has, um, you know, contracts that they're putting in place and construction that's starting eh, sometime in, in the next, you know, two to three years, there's gonna be days of the year, hours of the day that are emissions free and then that gets better. You know, how do we assure that happens? We're still gonna have natural gas plants that back up renewables, but they're gonna operate, you know, few, few hours a year rather than the majority of the time. But all of this is around, you know, further policy action at the state to make sure that Excel continues to be held accountable for delivering on their, their programs and plans. You know, I think, uh, the work we do with the commission has been, um, you know, really groundbreaking in, in terms of increasing transparency. We're, we're testing tools right now so that we can actually see hourly emissions from our utility and put empower community members to make decisions around when they use energy. You know, so I, I do think there's, there's a lot of, of progress. Um, it's certainly a risk. Um, but as I said, you know, today, even today with our grid mix today, we can reduce emissions and accomplish the other goals of air quality and um, stabilization if we're, if we're electrifying.
Okay, and then, um, just a general question. You know, we had that wonderful water supply conversation and, and again, I mentioned it at the, uh, our last agenda item. And it applies here as well. And I'm just curious if the anticipate, if the uh, integrated water plan that Joe mentioned that the, the water supply session would be the complement to this energy, more, more energy specific, cause again, water is also a part of a building. So I'm just having some concerns around the siloing of water and energy. But just curious if the expectation is that the integrated water plan would, would have some complements to um, the building aspect as it relates to, um, you know, water use, um, and those kinds of things. And then, uh, yeah.
Yeah, and the answer there is, is yes. Um, we work very closely, um, to, to integrate both water efficiency with energy efficiency within buildings. And, uh, some of the programs I mentioned are, are co-funded by our utilities department to, to educate around water conservation. And a lot of the, the things we incentivize are also water conservation measures, so.
But what are these siloed conversations though, Carolyn, I guess is where I'm going with that. And do we see a future where, when we're talking about buildings, we can talk about both water and energy at the same time?
Yeah, um,
Conversation.
I, I, I think it's really, I, I agree with you. I mean, I, I think it's a great opportunity to, to really, to really think about that. Um, you know, I, eh, where we intercept things is always a, a learning opportunity for us. But yeah, I mean, we certainly work collaboratively, like how do we build a ban, a plan that integrates that? Jonathan, you may have some thoughts. I think I saw you come off mute.
Yeah, uh, I did. Um, Councilmember Adams, I appreciate the question. One of the distinctions that I think I would draw is, uh, and this is not necessarily a plug for municipalize, mu- municipalization in any way. But I think there is something to be said around ownership models. Obviously, we control not only infrastructure but, um, supply. And so I think our water discussions are in a different place than when we talk about energy. Um, and that's part of the reason that we talk about how we continue to try to influence um, actions at the state level, whether it's rate design or program funding or regional grid planning. And so I think trying to contrast those or, or connect those in some way is a little bit difficult. But I so appreciate what you're saying, that we need to and we need to find ways to bring those two things together more meaningfully. Uh, but that challenge still exists in terms of the regulated utility model, Excel being our provider, owner of the infrastructure, the seller of, of the commodity. And, uh, our water utility functioning a little bit differently. So just wanted to name that.
Point of clarification, Jonathan, it was my understanding that energy is still technically a public utility, right? I mean, it is still technically regulated by the public and Excel Energy has the contract and owns the infrastructure. But it's technically, you know, the Public Utility Commission, which is the state, you know, which is us, the public. I, I just wanna, cause I feel like there's this expectation or this misunderstanding around both water and energy. As if these public, you know, these private entities are the primary player, when in actuality, these are public goods that these private, you know, entities have contracts around. Or, you know, whether it be Excel or Denver Water or Northern Water or, or, or what have you. But that's more of a comment that we can get back to later and, and also relates to some of the literacy conversation, climate literacy conversations that I've been having and the need for us to be on the same page around who owns what. And, and who has authorities and responsibilities around what. But I really understand and appreciate the complexity around the power dynamics that currently exist between those two entities. And, and still the desire to have a more comprehensive conversation. So really appreciate the, the response and the intentionality. Thank you.
And Taysha, Lauren.
Thank you, um. I've heard a lot of concerns from my colleagues and from community around kind of the reliability piece. Um, and I guess one of the things I was curious about is, um, to me, it seems like going electric in some ways might open up opportunities for, um, you know, more electrification, I think about our rec center that's can be powered by our bus, buses and smaller scale versions of that. I know in the power outage, I had friends who used their cars to power their refrigerator and things like that. Um, is that something that we could contemplate in this plan too? Kind of how we make or incentivize or encourage, um, making our community more resilient by having sort of small scale backup?
Yes, that's a really great suggestion, um, and I love it. Um, cause you're right, right? Having, if you're all electric, you have the ability to, to back up all electric with batteries, with even generators in, in emergency, when the gas system goes, there's, there's no backup or replacement. And, and if folks remember during the Marshall fire, um, the, the gas system depressurized and, and people who weren't within the fire zone lost gas supply, um, in addition to, to the homes that burned, right? And there's nothing that can, can make up for that. So, um, they were deploying electric space heating in that, in that instance. But if you're starting at all electric, uh, we have better solutions for, for backup.
Thank you. I could just, you mentioned that the cities should be, you know, in an urban area, we should be able to expect resilience. And I just feel like in our changing climate and with, you know, Boulder being unic- uniquely situated with these high risks of fire, flood and wind, it's a little I would like to say that I could expect that, but I also think that the reality of our changing climate is that we should build in backup systems.
Yes. Could I add to that, Carolyn? I, I really appreciate that, the question. Um, and it, it makes me think about there've been a lot of, of questions and comments about the reliability of the electric system. Um, but not kind of parallel ones about the reliability of the gas system. And there are definitely issues there. Um, we've seen some risks, um, recently in the rest of the country in the northeast around various, you know, polar vortex types of events. Um, and gas does not provide, or the gas infrastructure system does not provide the opportunity for, for those backups. Electricity and our electrical system is inherently, um, more flexible in terms of energy movement around places. Um, and, and, and in addition to what Excel can and should do, um, electrification provides the opportunity for individual homeowners or building owners to have, uh, local PV and battery systems. Um, to kind of, you know, if they so choose, take it into their own hands, uh, to provide a backup system. For, for all, you could do that right now for, for the summer, but unless you're electrified, it won't work in the winter.
Thanks Ben. Lauren, anything else from you?
That's it.
Okay, um, just a quick time check. We are scheduled to land this discussion at about nine o'clock. Um, I have, I think I'm the last person with a question. I'll ask mine and then we'll, um, move into, to comments. Uh, probably a couple minutes worth, um, budgeted for each. So, um, my question, it's, apologies if it's kind of a big one, Carolyn, and, um, eh, anyway, but I'm just gonna give it a shot. Um, so kind of picking up on Nicole's question about providing some assurance that the, the grid would be ready. I, I guess I would sort of pr- offer a different pre- premise, which is I'm not so worried about the grid. I'm worried about the business model of our energy provider being incentivized to deliver to us what we need. And I think it's pretty common for an elec- uh, electrification advocate to say, you know, this technology is fundamentally cheaper and more reliable than what we currently have. But we've heard Excel say that it's fundamentally more expensive because the distribution grid is more complicated. And also they don't see a business reason to part with gas. So I'm finding a, um, a disconnect in these narratives and you, welcome to, to, you know, question my premise, but if, if there's something to it, I'm just wondering, what does that say is, are the policy and re- and regulatory changes that will, that will create the incentives we need to deliver the outcomes that we're looking for? And I, I know it's a pretty huge question, so I'm sorry if it's, I should have sent a hotline on it, but I just thought I'd try it after hearing this.
No, I mean, it's, uh, you know, I think it's an ongoing question and, and you hit on a, a lot of really great points. So, you know, thinking about policy actions, um, I mentioned, uh, the senate bill from twenty four. And I, I can't ever remember senate bill numbers, so I apologize, but it's, you know, around modernizing our, um, electric distribution system. Um, one of the, one of the powerful things it did, um, was create the, the financial incentive to our utility to invest in the distribution system. Um, it, it allows them to collect money upfront, um, at, or as they're making investments, so reduces their financial risk to making investments. And we saw the first product of that with an, a plan that really seeks to address some of the reliability concerns we've had for quite some time. Whether that be, you know, creating redundancy in our, our substations that we don't currently have here in Boulder, rebuilding our, our ones that are well past their rated life. Um, you know, so I think that is a tool, right? Our, our regulators saw one of the barriers was the financial motivation. Um, you know, so making sure that those barriers are removed. And, and then we continue to advocate for the policies that, um, adopt these goals of the state, right? We're not alone in, in adopting decarbonization goals. The state has a low carbon code that's statewide now. Um, you know, I think those are the things that send the right signals, um, to our utility. You're correct, they're still motivated to maintain their, their gas system. Um, and I think that's a, a barrier we'll face. Um, but I think just being cognizant of that, we, we have conversations about what costs more and what doesn't cost more. I think we need to be cautious when our utility tells us that gas is cheap and it's gonna remain cheap. Um, we should understand that there is financial motivations behind that narrative that maybe are inconsistent with what we're actually seeing in the data.
Thank you. Great. Okay, let's, um, let's move on then to, uh, feedback from council. And I believe we have three questions. Um, if somebody could provide it in the chat, that would be helpful. Meantime, I'll read them. So, um, first one is what questions or feedback does council have on the analysis, equity, considerations and engagement approach? Second question is what feedback does council have on the proposed policy recommendations? And third question is, does council support moving forward with looking at modifications to the building performance ordinance and smart regs in twenty twenty six? As I said, I think we, we could probably budget a couple, couple minutes ish, um, per, per council member. Okay.
And if I could offer a clarification, uh, Councilmember Shishard, on, on the third one, um, this is specifically related to our proposal to address our over fifty thousand square foot buildings. So in twenty twenty six, we would seek to just address the largest buildings. So I just wanna offer that clarification to the ones that are currently regulated by the state would be the one we would seek to accelerate. So that's, that, that's what I meant by the last question.
Great, thank you for that, Carolyn. Okay, Mark, then Taysha and Lauren.
Um, I sup- I support the basic, um, instincts of staff and what they're doing and the direction in which they want to go. But I think our conversation to date has kind of ignored the elephant in the room. Uh, we were quoted a, um, a number, an expense for full electrification of four and a half billion dollars, which is the equivalent of the en- of, of the entire budget of the city of Boulder over seven and a half years. Okay, tha- that's, that is not a feasible for us to contemplate, um, expending in, in this manner. I, I, I don't know how you would think that we could do that and where those funds are gonna come from. Um, to give you another number, that's the equivalent of about forty five thousand dollars for every man, woman and child who lives in Boulder. So I would like to get where you want to go. But I don't think we can get to that place, um, in the manner in which you suggest. I also do have a real problem with the end of life, um, regulations, because some people are simply not going to be able to afford it. And, uh, I don't know if that would be considered an equity matter. Um, but it certainly seems to me it, it, it's impacting people who have less means. If you have a gas stove in a four million dollar house, it's really not that big a deal. Uh, to take it out and put in a panel and go electric. It just is not. But if you've been living for thirty years in a house that you bought for eighty thousand dollars, now is worth a lot more money, but you don't have the kind of income for that. That, that's a challenge. That, that's, that's a major problem. But unless you tell me that the four and a half billion dollars is not real, I'm looking at that and saying, how are we gonna get from point A to point B, uh, with a number that, that is simply beyond measure? For, for this community, uh, to afford.
Yeah, and apologies if I could just offer a clarification. Um, eh, just, just the four and a half billion dollars that, uh, Ben referenced would be that the capital cost associated with the replacement, um, we certainly wouldn't propose that that's um, borne by the, the city directly in any way. And, um, I think, uh, in our technical report, I think we seek to, uh, also clarify that that's not wholly different, um, from, you know, what would be typical investments. So as we talked about end of life, right, we're, we're trying, that doesn't account for what people would otherwise have had to spend um, when equipment reached end of life. So just wanted to offer that clarification, um, when you look at that four and a half billion number. Cause I, I think we might have made, created some confusion that we're not advocating like that's incentives or that's the cost of municipal uh, buildings electrifying, um, it's, it's the entirety of the, um,
Best that you provide us with a breakdown of what those costs look like so that we know which are going to be incentives from the state or from the feds, which are gonna be costs imposed upon, uh, homeowners. Uh, which are costs that we can bear at, at the level of the, of the city. Um, that number, as I said, is, is not sustainable, but if there are subcomponents of it that are, I'd like to know what they are and, and be able to look at this a little more holistically, rather than just take that number and go, um, you know, we can't do that. I'd like to know more about what we can do.
Mark, do you mind if I call you real quick on that? Could, cause that, just to, Carolyn, it's just to check in. If, if I understood that correctly, that's a number that would be paid over decades to replace equipment that dies. And you would have to replace that equipment anyway. So it, it, it's a, it's a, um, it's an amount that will have to be spent over decades kind of anyway. Um, and it, it's a question of where it gets spent, whether it's on electric or gas or other infrastructure.
I, I did not understand that number to be limited to, uh, end of life transfers. If it is, I'd like to know that. I'm simply saying we were given a number. I'd like to get a breakdown and maybe I can agree with you, Aaron.
So maybe what we might ask is a clarification is a follow-up.
Yeah, I think we, we get that feedback for, for sure and we can come back with some clarification on the numbers. Yeah, appreciate that.
And I will be very happy. Thank you.
All right, thanks folks. Mark, are you, anything else from you?
No, I'm good.
Okay, and there's sixteen minutes left. We've got Lauren, Nicole, Matt and Tara.
Thank you. It's me next, not Taysha.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Taysha, excuse me. My apologies. Taysha and then Lauren, Nicole and Matt and Tara.
Thank, thank you so much. Um, so, um, you know, generally, generally de- um, supportive um, of what has been presented, um, have so Um, have some some concerns around just getting more information around the baseline of where community is on. Through on these transitions, like what percentage, what areas? Um, I also just had um, you know, under the equity considerations. In addition to really grateful about the streamlining, um still had some concerns around just the the who decides aspect. So I'm still feeling like our equity definitions are like half of what equity is, which is. Um, more than representation and um access to programs. Um, but actually the ability to make decisions. So um, just would love to to see some more there, there as it relates to that. Aspect of the work is. Well, as accountability systems and what does that look like? I forgot whatever the other thing I was gonna say, so I'll just say it another time. Oh, well, I'll just continue to say I would love to see a better, a more stronger alignment with the water conversations. And um also was just really grateful um about the community solar component, the workforce development components. Um, there's just a lot that um I'm really excited about seeing more around the policy components. And then just in general, I appreciated some of the fiscal notes components, but I look forward to continued um use of the fiscal notes. Uh, particularly as we're considering trade-offs and prioritization. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Taisha, Lauren, then Nicole and Matt.
Thank you. Um, thank you for including us at this stage. I think um. Some of this confusion i- is maybe because of some of the structure in the packet, I think. Led to a little bit of confusion, both in terms of timeline and a lack of specifics, but I think that's partially related to. Um, bringing us in on the earlier side of this project. Um, so I I appreciate that. Um, and. Uh, you, in a reading packet, I initially had a lot of concerns. Um, because it seemed quite aggressive, but kind of understanding that these are phased and. Um, that you are continuing to ha- have conversations and understand. Where there are opportunities and constraints um in making these changes, I think is really helpful. Um, and I really encourage you to continue that so that any new policies def- are definitely um. Taking those kinds of things into consideration. I appreciated the focus on the larger scale commercial spaces and for residential um. Looking at mostly equipment replacement and keeping in mind that sort of when financially feasible aspect of it. Um, you know, related to panel upgrades and existing systems. I just think we do need to be careful about all of that. Um, I would love to see kind of. And maybe these are related or maybe these are separate, but um how we support the transition for split or shared ownership where. Either residential or commercial buildings um aren't completely outright owned by one entity. I think that that can make a lot of this transition um significantly more complicated in terms of who. Is responsible for costs and various other things and who has the power to make these decisions. Um. And then also on the resiliency side, just how can we support and incentivize that as well? Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren, Nicole, then Matt and Tara.
Uh, thank you. I also um just appreciate you bringing this to us for some feedback and just for us to get some clarity on on what you're headed toward as well. Um, and I appreciate just the uh, the scale, the time scale at which you're thinking about these changes too. Um, so for kind of my my response to the third question is yes, um with some. Uh, some conditions and it's really around thinking whether there are any changes that we would need to make to our um state uh policy. Our legislative policy um advocacy in order to accommodate this. Um, so I really do think we 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 need to be thinking about um. The changes that might be needed to protect our community, um and not just residents, but businesses too. Uh, to ensure that as we're becoming completely dependent on electricity, we're getting clean, regable, sustainable energy. Um, that can withstand increasingly extreme um climate uh pressures as well as remain affordable. To be like community, which is a tall order, right? In in this world that we're living, this partnership that we have with our utility provider. To ensure that people um, uh, the businesses and and residents won't be um harmed by a a a system that's not quite ready for it yet. Um, and and I just continue to remain concerned. I don't understand how um how our utility provider. Gets to the level of production that they're going to need, uh especially with data centers and some of these other things coming into the mix. Um, with the clean energy that we're looking for. And so I I guess. This seems like an opportunity to try to uh nudge some um focus on on outcomes and I'm just. I don't mean to co-opt this um, this this project with those um outcomes-driven. Uh, conversations, but it does feel like an opportune moment to be thinking about them. Um, and then, you know, I think one of the other uh, one of the other things that I would be curious just to explore a little bit more. Is whether there is um a point in thinking about reducing greenhouse gas emissions where. The sort of embodied carbon um question. Starts to influence the the tipping point at which it becomes beneficial to make this change, right? If if there is a case, and I I don't understand the the um HVAC systems or anything about how they work, but if there's a case where. We really are having or somebody's having to tear down, you know, half a building in order to make this change. Does that sort of negate any benefit that we're gonna get? And I don't know the answer to that, but I think it would be a really um. Uh, something helpful for us to know and for a community to know as we're moving forward. Is there a a point where? Um, where it really would do. Uh, do more of what we're trying not to do if we were to make this change. So. Um, that's that's my only other comment, but I I really appreciate you all thinking about this and and how we start to uh get to where we need to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Um, Matt, then Tara, then Aaron.
I'm gonna just say yes. Uh, great questions have been uh posed and comments. I don't need to add to it. I'd just say kind of a large ditto with where that's going. So uh reliability is my biggest concern with where we're, how we're gonna achieve all this, but um, great job. And thanks again, staff, for bringing us into this at this moment um and thinking about uh it so intently. Uh, which I think is so hard when there's so many tendrils and nexies uh applying to this work. So I appreciate that.
Okay, Tara then Aaron.
First, thanks to you, Ryan, for keeping us on track. Amazing. Um, the way you're doing this. Uh, I just wanna say, obviously from the way I talk, you know that I'm reticent. I don't have to say that. So Carolyn, when it comes to you being optimistic, I'm your opposite pessimistic person. Um, so I worry that we'll do something that Excel isn't ready for, then we'll have done it, then they can't handle it. You know, these are the kind of things that I don't wanna see. I know the question is, is how much do you push them? Or, you know, so that they do more electric and less natural gas versus what if we do this too soon? That's number one, so I'm worried about that. I also think the state targets are good. I don't know why we need to be more stringent. I'm just throwing that out there. There's something to be said for working together as a state, since our state has a good vision for this. So, you know, whether we should even be more stringent, I say you'd have to talk me into that, cause I don't see why. Um, I know that's not that popular. I'm sure I'm not gonna get any letters from constituents saying, good job on your speech. Um, I am worried about government overreach always. And so we've gotten a few letters where let me keep my, you know, gas stove and I know we had. Uh, some people love their nude convection, whatever stove, but people in general like to keep their stoves. And so I worry that we are just being too bossy and, you know, I'm just gonna leave that out there. I know that um, I'm sure that the other stoves are great, but a lot of people just don't want change. So it has to be like a a pretty big reason. I promise you that I'm not gonna put my fireplace on. If there's another outage, cause I do wanna live a long life. And I don't think there's anything else that I have to say. Because I didn't even need to say it. I'm sure you already knew what I was gonna say, right? All of you. And that's it. Uh, good.
Okay, Aaron.
Excellent. Well, I just wanna thank everybody for the phenomenal work. Uh, really appreciate that. And Carolyn, thank you for putting out that additional information a couple of days ago. Uh, I thought that was incredibly helpful. Really helped me understand what we were contemplating and why we were are getting the recommendations we're getting. So thank you for that. So I do think that we're on the right track. Um, I do support the next steps in twenty twenty-six. Um, just as you're moving forward, I think looking for ways to um. Make things simpler rather than more complicated is ideal. And I know you're thinking about that already. Jonathan, you mentioned that as well too. Uh, like the idea of ta- um, taking smart regs and integrating it into the new requirements and not having two sets of requirements. Um, also considering just the adapting the the state level requirements rather than doing something additional and complicated. I'm not saying that is the answer, but it seems like it would be simpler, so definitely worth uh considering. And then just going back to the the area of my questioning um about the uh end of life. Uh, that that is an area where I do think we should tread cautiously and carefully, that we wanna make sure we address the equity concerns, that we address the technical feasibility. Um, and so um, I know you all will be thinking about that carefully as you go down next steps. But that's, that's just the one that's stuck out to me is the one we probably need to be the most cautious about. To not have unintended uh consequences for people on fixed income or people with lower incomes and things like that. And also technical feasibility. So again, huge thanks uh to the team and I'm looking forward to seeing this uh move forward over the years.
Okay, is there anybody else besides me? No, I don't see anyone. Okay, um, well, I also don't like being bossy. Um, but I also don't like that we're headed for a climate that is six degrees hotter and is gonna look like Albuquerque's. And that we have not managed this problem over decades and we have work to do. And we have to do it in a way that's gonna be uh workable for our community. And I I'm I'm, so I'm a yes on your, on the third question, um on moving forward. I I appreciate the. The framework that you brought forward and all the thought and care that's gone into it and and that it's coming to us early. Um, on the first question about engagement, I had a cou- I had a couple of thoughts. One was, there was a um, a point about um de-emphasizing some um engagement with smaller. Homes, smaller units. I think that was partly because of the um. It it's just, it's, you know, it's just a a larger number of smaller uh entities. And um, it made me think about the subject of engaging more with homeowner associations. Which I think I would like to add to this, the question of engagement. So both, both to address that. The matter, but also more generally that we have, you know, over half of homes for sale today and literally today in Boulder. I did a Zillow s- search today. I think it was fifty-three percent of them are in HOAs. Um. The majority of incentives and programs we have for um homes are targeted to individual homeowners. Um, and residents, but but the majority really are administered by by a either a board or or a um. Uh, some kind of a management company. And so I just think there's such an incredible opportunity to think about. Um, one, going to this relatively small, smallish number of of administrators essentially. And helping number one to ensure that the majority, I think the majority of residents who live in HOAs. Know their by right authority to do a lot of these, these um, these upgrades to their homes, including energy upgrades. Including um, uh, making um occupancy and ADUs reforms to doing vegetable gardens. So just like making sure that people who live in Boulder can go to one place and see this is actually, you know, this is the case. Um, also to consider targeting administrators of HOAs as platforms for engagement with those those community members. As a way to um, just uh have some scale. And then thirdly, to look at HOAs as a way, as as a place to help to coordinate specs or collaboration. With with shared projects, could be energy projects, solar rooftop and so on. And some of these things I've just mentioned are ideas that council members and and planning board members have just said to me in the last forty-eight hours. Because everybody seems to be excited that I talk to about this HOA thing. So I would love to see HOAs more included in the engagement approach. Um, the second uh thing on engagement as a, as a suggestion would be, you know, back, back to the, the. Four billion dollar uh data point that created so much discussion. Y- yeah, I mean, cle- clearly, it's um. We're providing a picture to the public about what we're talking about and what's, 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 what's the opportunities are for us. Um, and how we do that is so important. And I would like to see, you know, in in a future iteration of this discussion. Um, some presentation of the of the innovations and the changes that we're excited about are gonna happen as as the market evolves. For example, as we've seen happen with electric vehicles. I mean, they've, you know, come down in cost to more or less parity with vehicles, which are already, you know, quite expensive. That's, that's another story. Um, but the technology adoption curve leads to reduced costs and, you know, people who work in this field will will tell you that. And also there's a number of specific innovations. For example, I just became aware of, um, I don't know if it's it's available in Colorado, but you can get. You know, right now, if you wanna do a home battery in your, in your garage, a power wall, you need to get an electrician and do do a bunch of work. But but we could theoretically have um our utility provider install a um, a switch. And that allows you just to plug things in so that you can go to Costco or whatever, buy a battery um for your home and plug it in, no electrician required. That that technology exists easily and it's just one of the things that, you know, we could be excited about. So I I'm just proposing that in in future discussions about what we're talking about, that we provide some. You know, optimistic view of the technology future and maybe we can't predict the future, but but say like, look, these are things that we expect to happen in principle. Um, okay, and then finally on policy, uh you're, which I think was the second question. Um, I just have two suggestions. One is to, uh, sorry, on this, on this policy. Um, one is to get really focused on what are the business models that we need. For our energy system to deliver for us. And that certainly is ex- uh around Excel, but it's other business models. And um, I think we'll be in the right place when we look at the the. The the costs that um, that our residents are experiencing with electrification. Um, and it's, and it's actually reducing their costs and increasing reliability um in practice. Uh, and then my, the final thing on um, this topic is just. Um, as we think about buil- buildings and communities, the the title of this whole thing, I I really hope we can lift up the subject of. Our, the previous discussion tonight, which was, you know, around letting people live in more space efficient. Homes in walkable places near transit and incentivizing that. Because the the the, we're talking through this, this discussion today about how are we going to incentivize um a more. You know, more state of the art, modern homes and communities. I would argue that that fundamental to that and i- is that um, we are also talking about the the subject of living. In a, in a walkable, more space efficient place and that we should be incorporating the incentives that we're discussing. Um, to to promote that too and make sure that people understand that that kind of living um is is a climate forward um approach as well. And of course, the things are independent, so not to suggest that it's one or the other. Um, okay, thanks. Sorry, I think I took the longest one there and I, and the one who took us over nine o'clock. So I think that's it for me. I don't see any more hands from council. Can I go back to the climate team, Jonathan and crew? Do you have anything else from us? Do you have what you needed? What can we do else?
Yeah, I I'll I'll jump in and give a, just a uh twenty second uh wrap up from my perspective first. I just really wanna appreciate the staff team that's uh done incredible work to get this before you tonight. Um, I think you probably recognize that it it was a little messy and it was expected to be. Because we came at this from a very high level, long-term plan, but also gave very specific actions and examples. And so I use that term, uh created a little bit of altitude sickness, kinda going from high level to deep in the weeds. Um, so thanks for sticking with us, but I really wanna acknowledge the team that has gotten us here. Um, it has been an extraordinary amount of work and it's a great foundation. And tonight was what we were looking for from council. We wanted your feedback. This was an early check-in with you. These things are gonna come back. We hear you loud and clear about the concerns and issues that you raised tonight. Gives us a lot of direction moving forward, so thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Chris, any, any other business uh from your side?
That brings us to the end for tonight.
Okay, then at nine oh four P M I will, gavel is closed.
Thanks, everyone, for the great discussion, really.